Good morning, everybody. Well, Phil? Just gonna hang tight here. I think that's better. Yeah. Welcome, everybody, to the committee of the whole meeting for January 23rd, 2004. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 9:30. Councillors, you have the agenda in front of you. I'd like to call on councillors, if they're, or administration, if there's any additions to the agenda. councillor Demoto?
Yeah, if I can, under new business, it's just something that came to me over the weekend. If I can add 7.7, just discussion on crosswalks near the school zone.
Thank you for that. Anything, any others? Mayor Ireland?
Again, if I may, it came to me just this morning, but I wonder whether we might add 7.8. And just a very brief update from administration regarding a request that came last month from the province to submit a description of all agreements that municipalities have with federal government. I think that's due January 31st. I just wanted a very brief update of where that stands.
Thank you for that. Mr. Given?
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Administration would like to request a brief in camera towards the end of the meeting. Likely, we don't expect anything to come out, and so we could do it as 10.1 after upcoming events, just before adjournment, update for council on intergovernmental relations.
So I have additions to the agenda would be item 7.7, councillor Demoto's crosswalks. Item 7.8, Mayor Ireland's request from the province for an update. And item 10.1, an in-camera intergovernmental. I'll look to council for a motion to amend the agenda. councillor Galer MP? All in favor? They're not opposed. Motion carries, and then I'll look to council for a motion to approve the agenda for January 23rd. councillor Hall? All in favor? They're not opposed. Motion carries. So we've been approved agenda in front of us. The first thing on the agenda is item four, and that's January 9th, 2024. We have the committee of the whole minutes on the agenda. Is there any business arising from those minutes? If not, I would look to the council for a motion to approve the minutes. Approve those minutes? councillor Galer MP? Yeah, okay, so acceptable. All good, no motion need. Okay. Okay, moving right into agenda item five, delegations. And we have Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce here for a verbal verbal update, I guess, and I think we have Patty Pavlov.
I wish I knew how to work the brakes on these chairs.
There are none.
Good morning, Mayor Ireland, Deputy Mayor Wilson and council. Thank you very much for hearing our hour presentation. I will qualify the word hour with that unfortunately, our president Troy Mills is unable to attend this morning. And so I am here representing the Chamber of Commerce. We do have one member of our board in the gallery as well. It almost seems moot point based on the late release of the agenda and the attachments that came out on Friday afternoon. I was just made aware of them this morning because I had missed that attachment when I was preparing for my presentation. And our vice president, Mr. Hardy, also missed it. So there was a couple of people who did not see this. I will go forward with a few of the things that I have to say. I'm very glad to have seen in the update on the transit policy and procedures. It is absolutely imperative that we, as a business community and who employ so many of the residents in our community, are able to continually offer service based on the mandates that you have as a town council to ensure that people are aware, people understand there is transparency and availability of information. So needless to say, I am sitting here with a little bit of a blush on because obviously a lot of that information was cleared up in this late release on Friday evening. But I will say that when it comes to the transit policy, yes, that has helped considerably, that information. But it is no different than any other expectation for service and obligation for service on behalf of the community by the municipal council. I would also like to say that we are still very much in need of some clarification on the transit center, the grant itself, the fact that we do have, pardon the quote-unquote, skin in the game as municipal residents and many of employees who pay taxes. So we want to further understand how this grant works, what the deadlines are and what the final outcomes are. So just again, some clarification on that. I can tell you that there was, and obviously had been addressed in this attachment Friday afternoon, there was some real consternation in our communities, among the business community. And of course, you know, in caring for their employees and staff who use the transit service. It's vitally important that that be available. My understanding is that there were opportunities available to cover off that 2.5-hour spread for which there was no service, and there were people in fact out in the cold waiting for the bus. Severe weather, I understand, nobody could have planned for that. But there were opportunities, and I think what rankled some of our business community was that there was a comment recorded that said something to the effect, and I apologize because I don't have the exact source or the day and time, but that was said that after careful consideration, the opportunity to maintain service over that period of time was then declined. So again, we as a Chamber of Commerce are, you know, it's our mandate, it's our mission to serve our business community and the residents who live here. And so it was, it was to us very disturbing that when there was an opportunity to maintain service over that two-and-a-half-hour period, that it was at first accepted and then 20 minutes later declined. And so just trying to understand how that happened and how that decision-making process happens. Again, so we can understand and not in a way that we are being confrontational. We want to understand it so that we can help. And we want to be more involved, as we've said in our previous presentations to council, that the chamber, for our community size, population of slightly less than 5,000, we have a very large chamber. We're considered a middle-sized chamber, not a small one by any means. And so we have a lot of investment by our business community in the community on both volunteer basis, event basis, festivals basis, making sure that there's housing. That's one of our number-one things, and we'll probably not let go of that one anytime soon. And labor shortages, you know, we work every day to try and better that situation, not just for the business community who desperately need workers, but also for the workers in our community. Let's make this all work together. So really, in closing, I'd like to say that, you know, our expectations, I think, are no less than any other taxpayer. We are a nonprofit group that works hard with the business community to garner their support as well for municipal activities and projects. And so we look forward to more opportunities to speak. I know at one point we talked with Mr. Given about hosting a seminar, or I'm not sure how exactly we're going to put it. You might have to refresh my memory, Mr. Given, on how to work with the municipality 101. You know, it could be a lunch and learn. It could be a better way of our residents and our businesses to understand the mechanics of municipal governance. And with that, I thank you again for your time. I would like very much to take questions if you have any for me, and certainly to maintain open dialogue between our organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pavlov. Really appreciate you being here today, and it's great that we have a partner with the chamber. And, you know, I think with all of these priorities that we're working towards, like housing, you mentioned, as well as transit, there's going to be growing pains, and we hope that you're here. And we hope that you're supporting and calling us out on issues that, you know, arise, and we'll keep striving forward to make things better or make our services better. But I'll open it up to councillors if you have any questions for Mr. Pavlov.
councillor Hall? Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Pavlov, for coming today. I did hear a question in the beginning of your presentation to us that I feel maybe CAO Given might be better off answering regarding the, you called it the transit center. I'm assuming the house for the buses we are potentially buying. Are you able to answer that? She had questions, I think, around, I think, all of it.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson, for councillor Hall. So yeah, during budget, council is pretty clear that administration need to bring forward information on the entire transit capital plan before proceeding with anything. So while we don't have that at the table today, because we're not proceeding with anything yet, we do have a little bit referenced in terms of the transit update, about some of the work that has happened. I would imagine that in our next committee of the whole meeting, we'll have a more detailed recommendation on next steps on the capital plan, and at that time, we'd have, you know, all of that published for the public and available to see. That said, the municipality has received a $5 million grant towards specific projects, which include the construction of an indoor transit storage facility and charging infrastructure for zero-mission EV buses, as well as e-bikes and associated charging infrastructure. So I think that that's all been discussed at a high level before. But council made clear at the budget discussion that before administration proceeded with implementing any of those things, that we need to come back to council to provide additional detail. And so that would be the point where the community would see that. At that time, we'll also provide additional, you know, the detailed breakdown of what the grant said, what we can and can't use it for, as well as the timelines. But again, I think during the budget discussion, administration related that the timelines are that all expenditures need to be made before the end of December 2025. And the broad categories are, you know, the purchase of three electric buses, associated charging infrastructure, construction of the indoor facility, and the e-bike program as well.
councillor Demoto?
And I know that you directed questions for council, but I think there was another question there about January 13th on the decision process, or was that the information, the package enough?
It was somewhat addressed, I would say, yes, in the release on Friday. I always thought I talked too loud anyway. Though the long and short of it is, a lot of what we were going to ask about was the cessation of service for 2.5 hours on that most frigid morning, and that there were opportunities to continue service, but it was declined. And so we were just, we had some concerns about that. And so what we're asking is for some clarification on what the process is. So do we have an actual process when making those decisions? And how that is done? And how we can be made better aware? Because there were people that were literally left out in the cold that morning. And I agree that the attachment with the Friday release did address concerns in that regard. So I appreciate that and hope that that type of communication can continue and certainly be enhanced through using partners in the community such as the chamber.
councillor Waxer?
Thank you, sorry. Thank you again for your presentation. The one thing that stood out to me in your comments was your difficulty in being aware of the attachments. And I'm wondering if there's something we need to do to communicate more clearly that along with the agenda, the whole agenda package is there? Because I think that's, since for many years, that has been the way the agendas have rolled out. So I just wondered if there was anything missing that made it difficult to find that.
Thank you, councillor Waxer. I will say for myself, honestly, I do look through the attachments on most occasions. However, the release came late, and as you might well know, we are in the throes of Jasper in January, and the chamber is involved in many different ways with the business community to make that event a success. And I simply missed it. I am aware, but I would agree with you that it is quite possible that people who do get the agenda package don't read the entirety of it. And that is something that maybe we could just, you know, bullet point somewhere. You know, please read the attachments, if not all, certainly what is pertinent to you.
I'm sorry, CAO Given? Yeah, Deputy Mayor Wilson, sorry, I certainly don't want to get into date, but I do feel I need to correct the factual record. Administration sent out the agenda for this week's meeting at, looking at my inbox, 3:45 on Friday afternoon, which is our regular time, and I believe it went to our regular distribution list, which includes the Chamber of Commerce. So I just feel it's important on behalf of our administrative team to say that we did follow the standard process that has been happening for, and in fact, this is probably one of, as council will know, we don't always get our agendas released as early as 3:45 in the afternoon. So I wouldn't say that it was a late release, and I believe the distribution list was the same as it always is. Okay, thank you. Councillors? Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to Mrs. Pavlov. Thank you for your attendance. I appreciate the observations that you've relayed and the concerns. I think it's entirely valid that the organization that you represent has expectations, as does the community, as does council for service levels. So I invite you to stay longer in the meeting. We will be specifically discussing service levels later in the agenda, and that is what is most pertinent. But I want to compliment you and the chamber for taking at least this opportunity to come before us in a, as you said, a non-confrontational manner, seeking a better understanding of what guides operational decisions. It's an important matter, and we are about to engage in that further. I was really intrigued by your comments about working with CAO Given to find a better understanding of how your organization and others in the community can engage with the municipality. This is certainly one of those opportunities. It's not the only one, and I know that you are here regularly, and I do appreciate that. Just staying current on the operation of council and our interaction with administration is a critical component of it, but there are other ways that you can find to engage with the municipality as well. So you mentioned the possibility of a lunch and learn or an in-service of some sort. And I fully encourage that because there are all sorts of opportunities available for you to and your organization to interact directly with those who provide the service. Council is here for governance, and we will look at service standards as you've encouraged us to do. But there are other opportunities as well. So I appreciate your interest in municipal affairs and your willingness to come before council as you've done today and as you've done many times. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland.
councillor Demoto? I just want to say that was well said, and thank you for saying all those things, your worship. And just through you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, to Ms. Pavlov, again, thank you very much for coming forward today. There's a Jasper partnership initiative meeting coming up on the 31st, I believe, the last Wednesday. I think this item might be a good topic for discussion, as there are a lot more members that might have some concerns or involvement, and just to broaden some communication opportunities there, I think we have that. And also, I think another topic might be Hakoni as well. There's been some talk, and I missed the last meeting, but very informational, and I'm looking forward to that progress. That's not neither here nor there, but it's just because you're here. So thanks again.
There is no further questions. Thank you very much, Ms. Pavlov, for attending. We invite you to stay for the discussion on transportation if you're able, and if not, please review. I think the next two items will be on.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Thank you very much again, and I look forward to working with CAO Given on producing this session on working with the municipality 101. Much appreciated.
Okay, great, thank you. So moving on to correspondence, item six on the agenda, there is none. Item 7.1, transit service standards is coming from us from councillor Waxer. And so I'll pass the phone over to her.
I would just repeat the words that I said last week, and then it will lead into 7.2, which is the service standards. And so last week, I indicated that I was troubled by the cancellation of the Saturday morning route during the cold snap. I was troubled firstly because people may have been waiting outside in the frigid weather and wondering or unsure about when the bus was coming and whether to abandon the wait and stress about getting to work. Secondly, I was troubled because I saw lost opportunity to showcase the value of public transit. I was imagining on that exceptionally cold morning, some people might have chosen the option of taking the bus rather than trying to start their frozen cars. And thirdly, I was troubled because I was fully expected low ridership in this first year of running the new service, but I know that it takes time to build trust and confidence in the new service. I was worried that not pulling out all available resources to keep the advertised route going might potentially have detracted from the trust and confidence building process. I completely appreciate that making decisions without, making these decisions is really difficult, and that my perspective might only be my perspective. I also recognize it makes it much more difficult for administration to make these decisions without clearly articulated expectations from council. And this is why I'm requesting that council have a robust discussion on our expectations so that a set of service standards can be developed to guide future decision-making. I appreciate all the work that admin has put into developing this service, and I'm really looking forward to watching the service evolve and really excited about the changes that are coming in February. And so I wanted to be clear that I appreciate all that admin has done. Thank you.
For that, councillors, would anybody like to speak to that agenda item as well? Or would move forward to the next item? Okay, I think we'll move forward to item 7.2, transit service update, and I'll look to Mr. Given to start that one off for us.
Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. So this agenda item 7.2 is maybe a three-in-one. We've got a general service update on the operation of the transit system over the last number of months, as well as some information about the winter service schedule adjustment, and then a specific discussion around standards and the service disruption. So maybe I'll take those in that order. We'll start with the general service update, which is basically the facts of what has been happening with the system, before moving into the other two items where there may be more discussion. So I'll refer council and the public to appendix one, which is the transit operational update for September 5th to December 31st. I know that council, you will have seen that, so maybe I'll just hit a few of the high points. Under the major projects, of course, this time period is starting up the system. We have completed and secured the $5 million federal contribution towards capital projects that was previously discussed. We've also secured partner operational funding towards the operating costs of the system. That includes our two school districts that are operating in Jasper, who confirmed their contributions. Their contributions are variable, depending on the number of students that are registered and need to be confirmed by the province, but we expect that their amounts will be equal or greater to the estimates that were previously provided to council at public meetings. Parks Canada had confirmed their contribution to the end of 2023, which they provided approximately $45,000.
Can I interrupt you? May I interrupt you for one moment? Is it possible to put appendix one up on the screen or screen share of appendix one? Just as we're all looking at it, the public isn't.
Sure, I think we can probably do that. That may take a moment or two. So we'll go through and put that on screen. But again, it is a part of the council committee, the whole package that is available on the municipal website under mayor and council, under agendas and minutes, and you'll be able to find the package there for download for anybody that wanted to refer to it and read it in a bit more detail rather than just hearing me go through it. Thanks for calling that up. So to continue on, Parks Canada has confirmed their ongoing contribution for three years of $145,000 per year for the next three years. So we have those three funding partners, the two school districts and Parks Canada, all committed to providing funding for the three-year operating contract that we have in place. Administration has also initiated a preliminary design scope of work development and a Class D cost estimate. I'm sorry, Emma, it's on page 21, just to help you find it. There you go. And you probably can.
Sorry for that, thank you.
I think you could probably hide the logo bit because we're moving down the page anyways. There you go. Thanks, Emma. So administration has started the initial work to inform an eventual RFP for facility construction at Bus Barn or Bus House, as councillor Hall called it. So that information will be coming to council at our next committee of the whole meeting. Administration has established a system for electronic pass purchase options for customers, as well as one physical parking kiosk. So you can actually buy bus passes at the physical kiosk with your credit card if you wanted to. You can buy it online through hotspot, and so that integration between our parking provider and our transit service is all in one place. So for visitors to town, they can pay to park their car if they'd like, and then get the transit pass through the same system. We've also done a few more administrative things that you might not immediately think about the importance of them, but installed cash fare boxes in all fleet units to ensure that any customers with cash can provide that and that it's in a secure form that allows the drivers not to have to handle the cash. And we've backed that up with the internal sort of chain of custody process on how we count that and deposit. And a number of members of administration attended the Canadian Urban Transit Association Conference and Trade Show, which just happened to be at Edmonton this year. It was a great opportunity. The conference often bounces between Eastern Canada and Western Canada, happened to be Western Canada this year. So we took advantage of the opportunity to see other transit systems and, you know, all the associated information that goes with that. We also are providing service statistics for the period. Again, highlights total number of riders over the, over 1,000 hours of service that we have provided. The total number of riders is just over 15,000. The majority are student riders, and I'll speak to that because I think it sort of speaks to the way the transit system and volumes are going to change, given our local economy. So just under 9,000 student riders and just over 6,500 general riders. You can see that our riders by month, September was our busiest month and has trailed off into December. I think largely this is reflective of how our local economy works and probably local occupancy. I think we would all recognize that hotels were not as full through those months. And so there's a real traditional curve. If you look at the chart that's below, I think that the way that that chart, the top line is the general ridership, and the bottom bars are student ridership. So you can see that the student ridership is generally quite steady, sort of grew into October. So you can see that the student ridership is generally quite steady, sort of grew into October. Maybe went down a little bit in November. I suppose that's the warm weather and people, you know, there's also the November break, warm weather. But that's quite steady where you can see the fixed route service or general ridership trailed down after sort of mid October. And I think that that's certainly in terms of what I hear about the local economy. It's after, after the Thanksgiving long weekend, everything sort of quiets down until the ski season picks up and we know that ski season has been a little bit later developing this year. So I think in terms of the trends that are there, they're largely in line with what we see in our local economy. And then in terms of communications engagement, I won't go through all of those bullets. We've installed signage around the community. We've distributed over two thousand transit brochures and that to move into a reprint of those. We've also established direct communication about service data, service status with priority partners, including the school districts, Parks Canada Tourism Jasper, Jasper Park Lodge and Pyramid Lake Resort. Because those are areas where our customers are frequent and people who help us get information about the service out. So we have direct communication with them and in particular the school boards, I think it's important for council, now the schools, boards communicate the status of our school special route through their own methods because they, you know, the, the customer, if we want to call it that, oh, that's maybe not exactly an accurate term, but the, the user there is parents and students and the school boards are responsible and in charge of that relationship with those users. And each school district has well-developed communication methods for their transit updates or transportation updates. Because they do this in communities across their entire service area. So we work directly with them. We've also developed route and schedule information into what's called a G T F S, such as General Transit Information System feed that can be adopted and input into Google, Apple, Open Trip Planning apps. You heard us discuss the Passio app as a part of the contract that that will be coming. And our system is already live in an app called transit.app. So if you go into your mobile app store, you'll be able to find the transit app. And you can see the transit routes on there. It'll already start to tell you which route you should take to get to where you need to go. The contractor is installing the automatic vehicle locator. So basically the, the GPS units in the buses that allow for real time location information to be coming up. And so that installation should be happening this week. We've also created a transit section on the municipal webpage. And we've provided an opportunity for customers to write feedback and as of writing this report, we'd received forty one comments through the transit feedback system. The high points were users looking for an increase in trips to J P L, options for grade seven to twelve students to use school service. Earlier morning in town options for commuters and additional service to the north end was another sub one. As council knows, we've developed some revisions to the service schedule, which we're going to talk about. And I already spoke about the coordination with the school districts to provide information to their, through their information systems. And we're starting the process of developing promotion and communications plans for our summer and spring operations because as council knows, our schedule changes and we change frequency based on the fact that we know that there will be more people in the community over the spring and summer. And so we're starting our communications planning for that. I'll pause there to ask if there are any questions on the general update, the statistics before we move into the winter service changes.
Thank you for that, councillors. Sorry, councillor Callahan.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. And to you, to Mr. Given, I'm curious about the funding for Parks Canada, the hundred and forty five thousand. As we've seen in your stats, the ridership is mostly from Pyramid Lake residents and from the lodge. Does that hundred and forty five thousand cover those areas as part of the contract with Parks Canada or is that just the general route?
Deputy Mayor Wilson for councillor Callahan, the Parks Canada contribution is essentially towards the overall service, recognizing that the service through different times of the year provides a different service to Parks Canada specific locations. But I think there's also acknowledgement for Parks Canada that transit has a broad general benefit to anybody visiting Jasper National Park. And so they're not at this time paying for a route to here or a stop to there or a certain number of hours. They understand the service that has been planned. We made a proposal that they're a reasonable share for them, a contribution will be a hundred and forty five thousand dollars per year. And they found a way to make that work and they're excited about providing that contribution. We've had some administrative discussions between the community and parks. They may have an interest in seeking other specific service. And we've told them that they would need to come and request that of, of us and the council would need to see that request. So the council can consider whether there's any interest in expanding services. Again, getting to that sort of when and how do we expand and what basis, which is something in that policy discussion we talked about.
Thank you. May I continue? Thank you. And I'm curious, the app for the transit, so as part of our contract with P W T, is this the app that was supposed to be brought in in September that will just be activated now?
Deputy Mayor Wilson for councillor Callahan, the certainly couldn't look at the council meeting. I think that when we're talking about the contract, we acknowledge that there'd be some setup time. Also, contractor provided interim units for us, as I think council, if you know, we expect our units that have wheelchair accessibility to be coming later in twenty four. And so we've been working with them and the third party Passio, that is the app that I think administration referenced. We didn't have an expectation of it starting up in September. I don't think we ever communicated that at the council table. But yes, this is the app and so the prerequisites to that were loading all of them and first off deciding on exactly what our scheduled timings were going to be at our routes. Loading all of that into the, the app or the data system with that third party provider Passio. And then getting these automatic vehicle locators into the units, which requires somebody to help and do that installation.
Great. And my next question is on passes. Do we have monthly passes as well and what's the cost of those for our ridership?
Deputy Mayor Wilson for councillor Callahan, I will go into my hotspot app actually to find that out. So yes, we do have monthly passes. But I don't know that number off the top of my head, but I can find it. So if I went into hotspot and went under the transit button at the bottom and went to purchase. I can read them all. This is so handy. So single use pass is two dollars fifty cents. A monthly youth pass is twenty five dollars. A monthly senior pass is twenty five dollars. A general rider monthly pass is forty dollars. A all you can use all day pass is seven dollars. We also have ten use passes for seniors, adults. So general use seniors and youth at rate of ten dollars for general use. Sorry, twenty two dollars for ten rides for general riders. Eighteen dollars for using seniors.
Great. Thank you for that.
Councillor Hope. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to listen, Deputy Mayor Wilson, I know your name. I wanted to speak quickly to the external contributions. So the hundred and forty five thousand from parks, the one fifteen ish from the school board and probably forty grand from the French school. Is that cor- correct ish?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, councillor Hall has it, has it correct? I think we've reported that previously. Again, those numbers are a bit fluid because it depends on enrollment of our students and then sort of final confirmation from the pressure government. But we expect in consultation with the school districts, we expect that those are the minimum numbers.
Okay, that's, that's phenomenal. Last year on, I think it was February fourteenth, when we, when this first came to us, we were projecting our contribution for twenty twenty four would be about three hundred and five thousand dollars. Are we? Is that where we're going to be? Are we going to be less than that or is there more contributions coming in?
I think the contributions are likely those, you know, from those parties that previously mentioned Parks Canada, the two school districts. And so I would expect that that numbers be approximate. Again, given the unknown nature of what ridership from general riders will be over the spring and summer months where Jasper is the busiest, I think that's a fair projection.
Thank you.
Just before I go to, you know, just like to highlight the hundred and forty five thousand for three years from Parks Canada. We honestly first went into transportation with like, if you build it, they will come attitude and the two school boards jumped on early and we were in discussions with parks at a fairly early stage, but as it is now, they've, they've, they've partnered up with us and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank them for that support and look forward to working with them in the future. Councillor Roxer.
Thank you through you, Deputy, Deputy Mayor Wilson to C O given. One concern that I had heard in the community was whether it would be possible to get a bench at the stop at Jasper Park Lodge because there are a couple of older residents who enjoy going out there and they, there's almost teasing about the, them waiting on a rock sitting there. So I just wondered if, if that would be our responsibility or the, or Jasper Park Lodge, or if that's within the realm of possibility.
Deputy Mayor Wilson for councillor Waxer. So Jasper Park Lodge, we have provided them signage and they installed the signage and identified the site. So I would suggest that something like any physical infrastructure on their property, they would probably want to direct where that would go, what it would look like. We have had some discussions as administration about our stops within the town site and in collaboration with parks, just initial discussions about what trend, what, what use, you know, what benches there might be at transit stops. We intentionally didn't go heavy with, we basically put a sign in the ground at locations because we weren't certain that any particular location was going to be where it would be on an ongoing basis. And in fact, you'll hear me suggest that we're going to, you know, implement two new stops. So we will talk about standards for benches. Over the next little while, we do have money in the capital budget for bus stop improvements within the town site. I can certainly relate that concern to Jasper Park Lodge. And as I say, I think on their property, they probably will want to be most in control of what the infrastructure would look like and where it would go. But we certainly can relate that we're hearing that from, from from our riders who may be their employees.
Thank you so much.
I see you councillor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Audio is okay? All right. Thank you. I just have a couple of quick questions, if I may, for clarification. To C O, Mr. Given, you had mentioned the school boards are responsible for direct communication with parents. And this, I think, relates back to the day where we had some confusion whether the bus was going or not. And I guess I would like to just clarify the, the relationship of that timely, and again, this is the important part, the timely communication to parents and the responsibility of the school board to do that timely communication. And then the second question to that is how do we support that on our website and through our information? Because I think it needs to be clear to those riders and those parents and those children where they get their information.
Deputy Mayor Wilson for councillor Melick. So certainly in terms of process, the municipality provides in consultation with the school boards, we've established a process where the municipality early in the morning before service started, I think at approximately seven A M, provides the school division with an update about the service and then they post that through their channels. And I think that's similar to how it works for them with any of their other services that they provide, whether contracted or directly provided. The school board, I think, works hard to train their parents about where to go for school bus cancellation or change information. And both the school divisions have pretty dedicated sections to student transportation on their websites. And both have a, a big bus app where they direct parents to go to find the latest information. So early in the morning, municipal administration provides the school divisions with an update about the transit service or if there was any change, the school divisions communicate that to, to parents through their channels. And the school division is responsible for ensuring that parents are aware of that. The municipality, for its part, you know, as we bring on our, our rider app, you know, and, and all this sort of live location information, that will be another source that any user, whether they're using the school special route or the general service, would be able to sort of refer to to see the live location of a bus and whether it's going to be, you know, if it's on its way or if it's parked somewhere or, or, you know, if it's stuck in a, in a bear jam, you know, somewhere, which is a hazard for Jasper that might not exist in other places. So I think parents are, understand generally that the school board is their source of information. The school districts are certainly the, have a significant amount of experience in communicating with parents about buses and busing. And they have dedicated systems to provide that information on a, on a timely basis. That will be supplemented by the municipality's information on live bus location when we have that up and running.
Thank you for that. I, I appreciate that because, you know, our, our parents and our, our provider, we needed to learn that on the first day of the cold snap and we learned there is a gap there. So I'm happy to hear that, that that is, is in place so that we don't have a, a repeat occurrence. And thank you.
Thank you councillor Melick, councillor Callahan.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Just to follow up on that, to you, to Mr. Given, I'm curious, Mr. Given, who determines if the bus goes to J P L or Pyramid for the kids to go to school? Is that us as a municipality? Or did that come from the school board? If the school board brings out, but they're not running a bus at minus thirty. But the provider here, P W T, has a bus warm and ready to go. Instead, do we follow the school rules or do we follow our transit rules ourselves? Like, who determines?
Deputy Mayor Wilson for councillor Callahan. Yeah, I think that you're, we're really getting the, the standards conversation. And, and no, 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 this is perfect because this is an example of the, the lack of clarity. And I think this is, you know, we are less than six months into the operation of our service. So I think it's not a surprise that there are some of these standards that were sort of saying, oh, we need to think about this. So during the, in advance of the very cold weather while school was in, administration did discuss with the school districts what their standards were. And we actually did it two different ways. So on the Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or the Thursday, Friday, we're about really bold. We, in proactive consultation with the school division, decided to follow their standard and council service, school, the school special route for the Thursday, Friday morning. And they communicated that to parents through their channels that, that they do on all their services. On the Monday morning, where the weather had changed, it wasn't so terribly cold. We actually ran our service and we were the only service that, only school service that ran in the entire Grand Yellowhead system. So if you went through the Grand Yellowhead app on that Monday morning, you would see that kids in Jasper, your bus is running, kids everywhere else are bussed on because Grand Yellowhead had chosen to proactively or preventatively cancel service a number of days in advance where we chose. So it was an example of where we followed a partner standard in the absence of any other guidance. So well, if that's your standard, then we'll follow that. And then we looked at it and said, this doesn't seem to make sense now, so we're going to operate. I think it would be useful to provide some, you know, this is where we start to get in and say, okay, so should the municipality have its own standard? Should the municipality follow somebody else's standard for a certain kind of service and under what circumstances might we do that? And that's, that was a good little case study of saying, okay, yes, we'll synchronize with our partner. And then saying, well, but our partner's plan actually doesn't make sense because we look at the conditions and we realize that we can't.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Holden.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. While we're on the topic of school buses, there's a lot of conversation in the community regarding our school bus not looking like a school bus and being yellow and having a stop sign. Can you speak to that? I wonder, are we the only municipality in Alberta, the country, that has this sort of unique collaboration? And it's a collaboration I'm very proud of and very happy that we've connected those students at the Fairmont to Jasper to participate in, you know, after school sports and they can stay in town. I think it's a wonderful collaboration, but I just wonder if you could, could speak to that.
Yeah, ab- absolutely. So no, first, we are not the only municipality in the province where there's a partnership between school boards and municipal transit systems to provide student service. There's a number of examples of that, I believe, from Fort McMurray to Strathcona County to Leopard, like there, there are many of them. We probably are the smallest community that, that does this. And I think that's a reflection of Jasper's somewhat remote nature and how we're disconnected. We probably are the smallest community that that does this. And I think that's a reflection of Jasper's somewhat remote nature and how we're disconnected from the rest of the Grand Yellowhead area. In a lot of other smaller rural communities, a organization like Grand Yellowhead would have a number of rural students living outside. You know, a large number of rural students living outside the urban area that they would need to bring into town to the school. Here we have a very sort of limited pocket of those at J P L and it's made it very difficult for Grand Yellowhead to run their own service. And so that's where the partnership, I think, made sense for them. The when a municipal transit system provides student transportation, it is through a dedicated transit route. And the governing rules for transit that that guide passenger safety and standards are under the Commercial Vehicle Safety Act of Alberta. And there are specific rules around transit separately. There are rules around school buses. The difference is that a school special transit route is a transit route that is dealer to the needs of of students and the schools in terms of timing, stops. And in Jasper's case, we went one step further and said, we're going to limit the participation. You know, the riders on this route, students only, because in advance of the startup, there were some comments in the community that said, well, I'm not sure that I want my young child on a bus where there may be people that I don't know on that bus. And so in consultation with the school division, we made a choice to say, okay, this is a transit route that is limited to these riders who need to be qualified to get on. And that was, I think, out of, you know, a proactive sort of intention to hear some of the concerns of the community. But in many other communities, it is a school special route that would be like ours, meet certain timings, but would be available to anybody to get on. The difference, and there are differences in the provincial laws and regulations about, you know, what school buses can do and what transit buses can do. We follow all of those requirements and go above and beyond for what transit buses can do. The reason that we choose to have a school special transit route is because of our small nature and the limited number of routes and buses that we have on at any one time. We need to have buses that are double duty. And so as you have likely seen around town, the large white bus goes into regular transit service regularly. So it is truly a transit bus. We have just changed the timing to meet the needs of the schools so that it picks up the kids that need to get to a certain place at a certain time. In the future, we want to maintain the flexibility if we have, you know, enough capacity to be able to allow maybe general users on. We can talk in the winter service, you know, changes that we're proposing, how we're going to sort of supplement that and allow more youth to be able to use general transit routes. The training for drivers is very similar. The safety requirements for transit agencies everywhere are well understood. And transit is in all communities is responsible for transport transporting a wide variety of vulnerable persons. In cities and towns everywhere, transit provides, you know, there are accessible transit systems that provide, I don't just use sort of the common term disabled transit or seniors transit, specialized transit, where they deal with very vulnerable populations and youth, seniors, people of all sort of cognitive abilities, transit needs to be able to provide service to all of those and the regulations and security and safety requirements support that in Jasper as they do across every transit system out there.
Thank you very much for that. Just thinking of communication with parents and remembering the days of sitting around the A M. Radio at seven o'clock in the morning, hoping your county is canceled. Thank you very much for that. And I wonder too if, you know, a bunch of time we approved money for the transportation master plan. I wonder if that will take a look at the routes and potentially putting crosswalks where there's school bus stops and just be fine tuning that at at some point.
So I I important to make a distinction. So it is possible that the transportation master plan will look at physical improvements and crossing locations in response to the provision of transit service. The transportation master plan is, if I can say, it's about the roads and the sidewalks, not about the routes of buses. So so the the use of roads and sidewalks changes depending on how people drive on them and what sort of systems are in place there. And so because we have transit, that will be a consideration about how the roads and the physical infrastructure might need to change in response to this new service. But it won't plan the routes for the service.
Thank you.
Counselor Nevada.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And just so Mr. Gibbon knows, I was taking notes in my phone from what you're dictating there and I forgot where I brought the wrong notebook today. So I was using my phone notes. I wasn't texting. Just, you know, well, it's perception, right? I just, I just wanted to say just in the for the sake, I know the street even wants to get on to the winter adjustments. But Mr. Gibbon alluded to the transit feedback forum, which I think is great. And just for the sake of, you know, communication and public engagement. I like the fact that, you know, we have the the opportunity to bypasses through hotspot. And for people that need or want more information, if you go to the municipal website under Town Services, the very first item on the dropdown is transit and it's got all the information there, including the feedback form, the maps, as well as where you can purchase your your passes and with all the schedules. So I think that's great. I think that communication piece is there and you know, more and more people are visiting our website and I think that's a healthy thing. So on the spirit of that, I just thought I'd highlight that. So thank you.
Okay, there's no further questions on Mayor Allen.
Sorry for the lateness of that. Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Just one question with respect, I guess, to communications and engagement. You've given us the news about contributions from public bodies. Is any work being done yet to incentivize the private sector to contribute through advertising on on the buses? I mean, we have only now got this first report. And so in September, the heavy month, we had five thousand sets of eyes in an enclosed space. It seems to me that somebody might want to take advantage of that. And it also seems to me that that's kind of the low end. By the time we get to summer, it will, there will be more sets of of eyes and there's an opportunity here for us to gain some some revenue. So I just wonder whether anybody from our side is engaged in that yet or whether they might be. And I would also encourage, of course, these statistics, limited as they are to be shared. Of course, they're on our on the agenda now, so they're publicly available. But as as more people in the community, businesses in particular, become aware of this opportunity, I would like us to be ready to respond.
Deputy Mayor Wilson for Mayor Allen. So the short and direct answer is, is anybody working on selling advertising the buses? The answer is no, not yet. We're focused on sort of building out the service. And in the budget, administration had proposed an amount for, you know, advertising revenue. So there is an expectation and a need for us to to move forward with that. So that is twenty twenty four work. A part of the consideration is the changeover of buses. So as I mentioned before, the contractor has ordered two brand new buses that are specifically for our service. And so there's a bit of a, you know, how fast you, you know, how fast you move on the advertising, what is going to need to be moved to different bus and installation maybe slightly different. So there's that sort of technical or operational consideration. But the budget does presume that administration will raise some revenue from advertising. And so that's an expectation that we're going to have to work towards. Okay, great. Thank you. Any further questions? Mr. Gibbon, I think you can move on to the next stage of your schedule. Okay, thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. So the next item is the winter schedule and I really appreciate Amanda that you're putting up. Maybe what I asked you to just, yeah, just go to that map and I'll discuss the report. And if you can, yeah, scroll up as much as you can there to try to get the button there off of the table. That's probably about as good as we're going to do. Thanks very much. I appreciate that. So as the public can see on screen, as the public can see on screen shortly, administration has heard from riders that there's a desire for some service adjustment changes. At the budget discussion, administration was directed to maintain the current total of transit service hours and adjust the schedule to respond to the customer feedback by reducing underused weekend and evening hours. So essentially saying, there's not additional money to respond to customer service desires. But council is okay with adjusting the schedule to meet those those interests. So administration has, I think, as I said before, sort of in that customer feedback, those forty one submissions, heard the primary concerns. And so we're proposing some changes that will establish separate weekday and weekend schedules. Right now, we have the same level of service, seven days a week. The proposed change for February will establish a weekday schedule and a weekend schedule. Part of those changes will be instituting a new weekday town loop, starting earlier in the morning at seven forty two A M. Instead of eight twenty five. At seven forty two A M. will provide an opportunity for students, grades seven to twelve, who don't qualify for student transportation to be able to use transit to be able to get to 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 the high school, Jasper Junior Seniors High. It will also be altering the J P L routes timings. So the first general service bus arrives at J P L from town at eight forty two rather than nine twenty five. So there's an opportunity for anybody that's living in town that needs to get up to J P L to be able to arrive earlier in the day. We will also be increasing service to the northeast end of town by establishing two new routes on the map. You can see them, I believe, that they are stops, sorry, two new stops, stops twenty two and twenty three that are at the northeast end of town. So providing more service to that area that was underserved previously. So administration is proposing, well, is moving forward with initiating these changes for September fifth. We're working towards advertising to our riders, both the information in the buses and through our, you know, all of the municipal channels, social media, website and so on. You'll see that communication coming out very, very shortly. And these proposed changes will increase the service where users are asking for it. While not increasing the overall cost because we are reducing underperforming weekend and morning routes. So the table that's provided in appendix two, the one that's on screen for the public, provides a comparison of the existing winter service characteristics with the option A. And administration did consider a number of options and it's settled on this option A. And you can see the, you know, sort of a contrast between the total hours of service, which is just slightly less per week, the change to the high school service. So previously, there's no tailored service for high school age students or that seven to twelve group. Under the new service, there will be a stop at the hub, which is essentially at the visitor info center that students from the south end could get off the bus and walk over to the school. Or they can continue on the bus up to the new stops twenty two and twenty three, which are the northeast center town. The bus will come down and stop at stop eight, which is the recreation center or the museum, if you want to call it that, sort of stopping there. Students can get off and walk across the street at the crosswalk there to to the high school. So again, those timings meet the needs of of high school students and the loops provide additional access. From there, another concern or issue that we wanted to address was school bus capacity, the general school route capacity. And sort of the question of what if everybody that qualified rode the bus one day? And so certainly with our, the large white transit bus that provides a significant amount of capacity, but to ensure that we have additional capacity and flexibility for other people, general transit riders. Once that new morning town loop stops at stop eight, it will follow behind the school special route. And so essentially, I guess I've learned that in the industry called this platooning, but we'd have basically two buses, you know, one bus following another. And so you'd have the large white bus going down, picking up the qualified students, the elementary age students and general riders, including adults and, you know, high school kids, I suppose, if they're going to be late, which happens with high school kids sometimes, but a later sort of arrival. So on that second general transit route that would start it essentially its regular town loop in the morning. I mentioned before about the A M. Lodge service arriving earlier in the morning and essentially adding one more stop at J P L. So we would arrive at eight twenty five, nine twenty five and ten twenty five. And then you can see the reduction in the number of town loops. So I think as referenced, and we'll discuss a bit more about sort of the data that we've seen. Our weekend town loops are very low utilization. And so administration is recommending reducing the number of weekend town loops to three per day in the morning, per weekend. And in, you know, and supporting that for earlier start to service. I should say that the the complication is that obviously that earlier start service, having two buses running at once means that we have, you don't need to have two drivers at once. And so that's part of the the consideration. So again, you can see the contrast in the the two different services. Administration believes that this really tailors the system to the needs of users and the utilization that we've seen over the last period. So before we sort of said, this is, you get the same level of service all all the time. Now we're saying, okay, we can see that there's a need for a different type of service during the week versus during the weekend in winter. And we have some specific types of uses, high school students, commuter uses who are using it for work that we've prioritized in this service service schedule. We're also changing the timing slightly so that it's a little bit easier for users to understand. So you can see, for example, in that A M. Lodge service, before we would arrive at nine oh eight and ten twenty eight, like, and now it's eight twenty five, nine twenty five, ten twenty five. So a little bit a little bit easier for, I think, users to predict and understand. So this is the direction that administration is working towards. And again, we're, the communication information is under development. We've worked this through with our contractor provider. They're ready to implement. And this service change will only be for the winter schedule. As council knows, and as I referenced before, we do change depending on season, recognizing how the visitor economy works here. So this service pattern will begin on February fifth and will continue until the end of the winter service schedule, which is scheduled for May sixteenth. So May sixteenth will transition to our spring summer schedule. Happy to answer any questions for council on that. But that's an overview of the, you know, how administration has enacted the the direction to maintain to address customer feedback while staying within the approved budget. Thank you for that, Counselor Waxer. Or sorry, Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I really appreciate this. I have forty one residents filled out feedback forms. We've adjusted schedule to meet their transit needs as the schedule, as we, you know, move forward with our transit service. It's going to, there's going to be adjustments, which, and I'm really happy with this. I think we could encourage more residents to fill out forms, as Counselor Nevada pointed out earlier, where you can find those. This came to me over the weekend regarding in town winter loops. Would a dial of us make sense economically? I'm like.
Yeah, so Deputy Mayor Wilson for Counselor Hall. So the dial of us, or I think the fancy nowadays term for that is, you know, on demand transit. And so you'll see in the you'll see in the Transportation Strategy and Action Plan that was brought to council in February of twenty twenty three. There is actually a recommendation that the municipality should consider on demand transit after running the fixed route system, particularly in winters, because we know that the the utilization is going to be lower. You know, we predicted that. And the suggestion is that the municipality may wish to transition from a fixed route to on demand or supplement a fixed route with on demand service. But that that should be a decision that's made sort of after the collection of some data and sort of seeing how the system works. But so the answer is yes, that's something that could be very valuable. We certainly had considered that in the Transportation Strategy and Action Plan. And it's intended to be considered after running the system for a little while to see how the fixed route system works.
Thank you very much for that. I really appreciate that. I guess, you know, earlier talking about how I wait around the A M. Radio for the announcements, the dial of us, yes, on demand is more future.
Thank you, counselors. Counselor Nevada.
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor through you to Mr. Gibbon. Just a little bit more clarification on some of the information. I really appreciate the updates, first of all. If there are people If there are people out there that are tech savvy and like to post their schedule on their fridge and things like that, I know that a lot of people do that with the aquatic and fitness center at home. When are people expected to have, like, updates? Is it just going to be, like, random, or is there going to be a system in place where it's like every month we're going to update our schedule? And if there's going to be any changes, we'll do it at the end of the month or beginning of the month kind of thing?
So the on the municipality's website, we already have the the fall and spring schedules posted. So that information exists. I think the adjustments that we make, the question would be, how often are we going to make adjustments? That does get into standards about how and even here, this adjustment, administration is moving forward with establishing two new stops, a service standard might say, okay, well, how, what are the conditions under which you would establish new stops? How much lead time do you need to have? You know, I wouldn't expect that we would be changing a schedule mid mid mid-season. Thank you very much for that. Mid-season on a regular basis. Ideally, we'll, over time, you know, again, after we've gone through an entire cycle where we've seen at least one winter and at least one spring and one summer, we'll understand, you know, how the users use the system and changes to the schedule would be less frequent. This change is being proposed because we couldn't very clearly see where the user demands were. We could see some gaps. And we thought it was reasonable to adjust, you know, in this first year of operations, to try to be as nimble as possible to customer feedback. And we're trying to balance that off with giving people enough notice of changes and being as regular and dependable as possible. And so I wouldn't suggest we're making changes like this every year. In this case, we're trying to provide at least a couple of weeks of notice, and we'll be accomplishing that notice with in-bus advertising and posters to ensure that riders between now and then are able to see that this change is coming. Can, will likely use. We'll have information posted on the website. We'll put it through our social media channels. And and that in-bus information will probably provide QR codes to take people right to the refreshed schedule.
I guess that kind of segues into the second part of, I think, but I did want to say that, you know, I weren't I don't think that anybody's expected to get it right the first time around. I mean, because it's new, we're going to find different, you know, demands and redundancies. And I think too that at the end of this whole thing, just like pay parking, we're, we're going to see where, you know, like the strengths are in some of the rooms for some of the areas for improvement. And and then we're going to see, like, how important is this service to, you know, other members in the community, like, let's say, pursuit up at Pyramid Lake and Jasper Park Lodge in Parks Canada, then have a broader discussion on, you know, like, we've built it and people are coming. So how do we make this work? You know, equitably for everybody. So I think, you know, that's, that's going to be a great conversation to have at the end of this. But having said that, going back to the schedules, what is the best way for visitors to access the schedule? And and, you know, I really like the way things are outlined with the different colored routes, the green route such. So if if I'm over at Forest Park Lodge or at the other end of town and I need to get around, what do I do?
So first, administration has has put transit route maps and schedules on all of the bus stops. So there is essentially a little board there that provides all the information that a person would need. So you can see a little marker that has a little blue sign, blue and white sign with a bus. So, you know, hopefully the international symbol for here from bus stops here. And when people go to a bus stop, they could see all that information. Just anecdotally, it's been interesting to see that some properties in town have taken it upon themselves to take the information from our website and integrate it into their own websites. I think it's pretty common for for hospitality providers to have info on how to get around. I've seen at least one that's actually on their own page, integrated the information that we're providing on ours. But certainly the municipality's website is the best for that. Town services, transit, the schedule is available for download. And we do work through our partners like Tourism Jasper and Parks Canada to provide hard copy brochures so people can find route and schedule information at bus stops. If they went to a visitor information center, either Parks or Tourism Jasper, we would have hard copies there. And then, of course, there's all the digital ways. And shortly, we will be providing that information through the app. So I mentioned the transit app is sort of one that is independent third party. And they said, hey, we see that you've got transit. We'd like to put your stuff in our app. I said, absolutely, you can. And that app is international and, you know, serves a number of other communities. So if somebody's traveling, they may already have that that app and we'll make them aware of our local app as well.
I just wanted to make an anecdotal con-comment, something that happened over the holidays that I witnessed personally, which, you know, it's just all about getting used to having a transit system here. You don't even think about it. We made a plan to meet some friends at a local establishment that were visiting from out of town. And we didn't even think, you know, like, how are you getting into town? Because they were staying at an outlying property. And so when we were talking, and one of them said, hey, congrats on the transit service. We took the bus here to have drinks with you and go back home. And I thought that was great, you know. And I said, wow, you know, I I didn't even think to, like, hey, check this out, right? So I think it it's something that, you know, isn't on our minds all the time, but I think it's a, it's a valuable service. Thank you.
Councillors, any anything further for Mr. Given? Mayor Ireland, of course.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Has, apart from being on this agenda today and therefore on the website, has has this scheduled change been advertised at all? And I'm curious in particular about the comment about eliminating underperforming weekend morning town loops. So they might be underperforming in terms of the performance of other routes. Probably everything is underperforming right now because it's, we're just growing the system. But I I wonder, given the nature of our community as a tourism-based community and the fact that business goes on on weekends, is there any risk that we're eliminating opportunity for somebody to get to work on time on a weekend by eliminating weekend routes and whether there has been any advertising of this pending change so that those people might be aware and either comment or or find alternatives, which of course they would have to have had before we ever had a bus service anyway. But I I just wondering how you looked at underperforming? What the the rationale was to determine that any route was underperforming when the whole system is just barely getting going?
Thanks very much, George. So the answer to the first part is no, we haven't undertaken any advertising, yet this, those communications materials are under development right now. Expect them to be finalized by the end of this week and then posted very shortly afterwards in buses and then through the municipalities' channels. So that will be coming. The second part of your question was, you know, how does administration sort of identify underperforming? That does get into a little bit of the service disruption discussion, but there is a table that's in the agenda package that shows the number of times through December where the town loops traveled with zero riders. And in fact, the town, the two town morning loops on weekends, more often than not have nobody ride them. So we're in contrast, you know, the afternoon loops in town have better ridership and our routes out to Pyramid and the Lodge both pretty regularly have, you know, at least a few people. So again, low numbers, but zero is probably about the lowest we can get. And when consistently zero, that starts to indicate to administration that that's not an effective use of resources. And that's why we recommended that there are other times of the day and other days of the week where there appears at least to be more demand or interest. And so why don't we shift away from times where we already know that we often get zero riders to times where we're at least hearing again, to be proven out whether people actually start to use the service, that there's high demand. And so the morning town route during the week, you know, we hear that there are a lot of students that would like to be able to use that to get to school, and people in town that might use it to get to work Monday to Friday. So we're going to give it a try and see. If it turns out that actually the utilization was the same, you know, as we were seeing on the weekends, very, very low or zero, then we might have to reconsider. But again, this is a bit of that, I don't want to say trial and error, but educated, educated revision. We have some background information that says a lot of people ride during these times on the weekend. Those are good candidates, at least in our estimation for for adjustment. And again, that does get to that service level expectation, and and there's a balance, I think, to be had. And council can give input, the community can give input. Is it reliability, consistency, dependability of running the bus all the time, no matter whether anybody gets on it or not? And there's obviously merits to that versus efficiency and resource allocation and saying, nobody rides this, stop doing it, and adjust to somewhere where somebody may ride it more. And so that's, that's the nature of the discussion we're having. And you can understand that there's a number of sort of competing factors there in the absence of any other guidance. Administration is going to make this change, recognizing that it's only for a limited period to May sixteenth. At the conclusion of that winter service schedule in May, we'll be able to collect that and say, okay, so what was better? Running those extra loops that people requested weekday mornings or running on the weekends? And we can adjust for the following winter schedule.
Thank you for that.
Councilor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'm curious if you've received any feedback requesting a bus stop in the industrial park.
Deputy Mayor Wilson for Councilor Hall. To this point, I am not aware of any. It's possible that in those forty one comments, there may have been a one-off. Certainly, administration was looking for broad themes where there are, you know, multiple people requesting the same thing, because that's where we start to head towards. So I I would, I don't want to say that we haven't received any requests. It's possible that it was there somewhere. But I'm not aware of one. Certainly go back and look through the feedback group to see, but that that didn't appear to be a theme shared by a number of people.
So Given, have you, would you like to carry on?
Well, yeah, if council's finished with questions or discussion on this schedule adjustment, we'll move into the discussion.
I wonder, I wonder if I just might speak to a a point of order. Deputy Mayor Wilson, we are scheduled for a special meeting that has been advertised at eleven o'clock. So I I would propose as a point of order that perhaps we take a recess now, reconvene at eleven o'clock, dispose of the special meeting business, which I think will take us ten minutes, and then reconvene as committee of the whole. And I I apologize when I, when I set the the time based on the council motion last week, I I had a false expectation that this committee of the whole would be a a short one. And we might be done by eleven o'clock, but I didn't want forces back at one thirty, but eleven o'clock has been advertised. That's, that's a proposal for the next fifteen or twenty minutes of our time.
Would you like to make a motion to recess?
I I don't need to. You can just call one.
Okay, well, I'll call recess. We'll return approximately twenty minutes to this committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you.
For eleven.
What special meeting?
I'm going to keep the Zoom link open. It'll be the same for everybody.
Okay, yeah.
All transparency, I was texting.
I know.
Yeah, but yes, I'm going after the big guys.
Good morning. I will call this special meeting of council of the municipality of Jasper, of Jasper to order January twenty third, twenty twenty four at eleven A M. Can we confirm that Counselor Melnick is with us? There he is. Thank you. It is important that we are all present because of the nature of the rules surrounding special meetings. We have a proposed agenda. I have been approached by a member of the public who is here in response to the published agenda and wishes to speak to the utility fee levy and collection and collection by law twenty twenty four. So item three point two on our agenda. And in the absence of any objection from councillors, I would be prepared to add to the agenda for today's meeting that topic, which would be three point one point one or something like that, to fit between three point one and three point two and allow a member of the public to speak to us before we get into the motion on the third reading of the utility fees levy and collection by law. Is there any objection to hearing from a member of the public?
No.
All right, we will consider then that 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 is added and the agenda is amended to include Mr. Dietrich as a delegation. I have a motion then to approve the agenda as amended. Counselor Hall, thank you. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. We convene this special meeting simply to deal with outstanding business, third readings of three separate bylaws. I understand, Mr. Given, you can confirm that we have received certification from Parks Canada in respect to all three bylaws.
Your worship, that's correct.
So if we begin then with the bylaw two fifty seven, the supplementary assessment of improvements for the taxation twenty twenty four. Is there a councillor prepared to make a motion that council read that by law? That is number two fifty seven for a third time? Counselor Keller, thank you. That motion is that council read for the third time by law number two fifty seven, being a by law of the specialized municipality of Jasper in the province of Alberta to authorize the supplementary assessment of improvements for the taxation year twenty twenty four. We'll call the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. And is there a councillor prepared to make a motion for a third reading of by law number two fifty eight? That is the supplementary taxation for the imposition of supplementary tax for the taxation year twenty twenty four? Counselor Hall, thank you. That motion is that council read for the third time by law number two fifty eight, being a by law of the specialized municipality of Jasper in the province of Alberta to authorize the imposition of a supplementary tax for the taxation year twenty twenty four. See, I'll call the question. All those in favor? There are none opposed. That is carried. And before I ask for a motion on agenda item three point two, the utility fees levy and selection by law. Mr. Dietrich, you wish to speak? You are welcome to do so.
Good morning, and thank you for letting me speak. I would just like to discuss or have a discussion on some of the details that came to light last Tuesday, the sixth in regards to the water levies and recycling. And I apologize in advance for not being hundred percent prepared, but it's been just a week and I'm still working on getting more data. Time and water is probably our most two-precious resource, so I'll try and be brief. But this is a complex issue. There's lots of ways that the administration can present the numbers to the public. And in the last meeting, there was just a couple of questions from Mr. Ireland. And nobody else in council had any questions, and that might be because you already knew the answers. But as a viewing member, I didn't, I wasn't aware of that. One of the things that came up was the administration saying that consumption is a major part of the levies. And so I had a hard time with that, so I started doing some simple math. So I want to present that simple math to you right now. And since I wasn't able to get other data, I want to use the figures that were presented by the municipality. And so if you take water and you use the residential base, which I'm told is fifty eight point nine percent of the tax base. Now, I'm not a hundred percent sure that's accurate. I've asked for that information. But what I'm seeing online is fifty eight point nine percent. So the residential, the average, I'm being told is twenty cubic meters of water used every two months. When you add those figures up, the connection and capital fees add up to eighty three point five two percent of the bill. Now, because twenty percent or twenty twenty meters squared is the average, you've got to assume that there's lots of people using more and lots of people using less. So in an actual bill of somebody using four cubic meters of water, the connection and capital fees are ninety six point two percent. Now that's costing those people seventeen dollars and ninety two cents per meter of water that they're using. If you're using twenty meters of water, it's costing you four dollars and thirteen cents. Now, if you jump up to a large commercial, which we're told uses an average of one thousand four hundred and thirty once, no, one thousand five hundred and forty three cubic meters of water in in two months. The connection and capital fees work out to twenty five point five twenty five point five four percent. And that's costing them a dollar forty eight per cubic meter. So when you look at this data, it appears that there is no incentive for the people of Jasper to save any water. What's happening here is the community, the local commercial base that is using more water and putting strain on the system and costing more money for repairs and the building of, say, the sewer plant. They're actually paying the least amount for their water. And while I know that the administration wants a consistent amount of money coming in each month. And they want to be more accountable by saying this money is going to connection, this money is going to capital and this money is is how much we need. And before we used to charge X amount of dollars, everybody paid the same amount for the amount of water. The more water you used, the more you paid. And somehow that didn't become adequate or or correct. So I tried to find out how much water is in a given year used. And how many accounts there are. And do the simple math of going, okay, well, we know how much money we need. So what do we need to charge per cubic meter of water to hit that goal? And yes, water consumption goes up and down, and the administration has said that the majority of the fees are in consumption. That is not true for fifty eight point nine percent of the people. Right? And it just doesn't seem fair to the majority of the taxpayers here. And so if you want to be more accountable for the where the money goes, it's such a broad spectrum. If you're saying capital fees come up to five million dollars and they're used for this, it's hard for us to follow where all that money goes. So it's amounts to trust. We trust the administration to spend the money in the most conscious and appropriate manner. That that's fine. Let's work off that and go. We need X amount of dollars per cubic meter to reach our goal of how much we need to bring in for our connection fees and our capital fees. And if it doesn't come to that number, the capital fees are used, in my opinion, it's a tax, which is which is fine, but we should call it a tax because it's it's to do with infrastructure. It's to repair the infrastructure or even perhaps put in new infrastructure. We're not going to be able to follow where that money goes. But let's just base it on that. And if it doesn't come into the right amount of money, the next year you charge more for the water. And then at least you have a system where people can go. If I conserve water, my bill is going to be less. If I use more water, my bill is going to be more. You can follow the numbers quite quite clearly, because if you use thirty five cubic meters of water, you're paying two dollars and twelve cents. If you're using sixty five cubic meters of water, you're paying a dollar seventy six. But if you use less, it goes up more.
If I could just, sorry, interrupt for a moment, Mr. Deterker. We are in a special meeting, but our regular procedural by law still applies, which limits speakers to three minutes. I've given you six because I I appreciate that you have something to say. I think we have, Bill. The gist of your your comments that a consumption based fee would be more appropriate and more fair, I think, is is what you're saying. If if you want to take twenty seconds to just give a finishing statement, that's fine. And then I will invite councillors to ask any questions that they may have.
Okay, I'm going to jump to another another subject because I only got twenty seconds. We're going to increase the recycling fee by nineteen point three percent. And nobody has said what that what that money is for. It's becoming common knowledge that in Jasper, glass and tin, people wash that stuff before they put it in there and the stuff gets taken up to the dump and thrown away. We can just as easily put it into the garbage cans and throw it away. We can save a lot of water. And the producers are making water when when they add it on to the bill when you buy the product. And as a consumer, now we have to pay nineteen point three percent more to get rid of it. I need to know that program makes sense before you go forward. And thank you for your time. There's a lot more information, but all this information, if I am able to figure this stuff out, council can look at the bills of their own properties and figure this stuff out and do what's best for the community as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Deterker. I will invite any questions councillors that they may have for Mr. Deterker. Councillor Demora.
Well, I I don't have a direct question for Mr. Deterker, but maybe if we can get some clarification on if those numbers are to are correct, if if Mr. Deterker is reading it right, because I understood the the whole breakdown differently. I tried to do some math at home and just because it's not my wheelhouse, I I was trying to get something, but I understood it differently. I just wanted to get clarification, I guess, through you, your worship.
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
Just take your connection fee, your capital fee, the amount of water you used, times it by the amount of the cost of that water and the pipe size. Add those up and then do a simple calculation on percentage of each one, and that's how I got my numbers.
Yeah, I understand that process, but I think just from the information that was delivered last week, I just understood it differently, so.
So did most of the public.
Okay. And councillor Melnick had his hand up too. I did have a question from Mr. Given clarifying. Your worship, I I actually.
Go ahead, councillor Melnick.
Thank you. I actually have a question for clarification for administration, but I need to ask if that's appropriate.
I will allow that, yes.
I I heard a comment about the capital that the capital component of our utility fees. A question was asked whether we can follow or not where that money goes. And I'm I'll ask Mr. Deterker if I heard that correctly, and then I'd ask Mr. Given the question after that.
Yes, you heard it correctly, and I was referring to the small amounts in that large number.
Thank you. And if if CEO Given can can clarify and where I'm going with this is we have a capital component of our total collection of utility fees, of which that goes into the reserve and then we take money out of reserve to do projects and then we have grants come in. So if you could clarify, Mr. Given, we can actually track like the amount going in every year, the amount we spend, the amount we get in grants, and then the balance at the end of the year, correct?
Your worship for councillor Melnick, yes, that's correct. So council will remember that some time ago, council approved a revision to our reserves policy that specified what types of reserve the municipality would have and what the use of those reserves would be and how they could be utilized. That exists on the municipality's website, as councillor Melnick sort of is referencing. We do have a water capital reserve that specifies how many gets into that reserve and it's from, at least in part, the capital charges. It specifies a target balance of that reserve and it specifies what that reserve can be used for, and it is for water and wastewater, physical infrastructure. And so essentially funds the capital plan for the water and wastewater utility. The other thing that I would would note is that our utility operations are fully self funded. There's no sort of cross subsidy from property tax. And so that's that's not a principle that the entire system is built on, but the capital charge funds annual, the annual capital plan and program for the water and wastewater utilities.
Thank you, your worship. I I appreciate the clarification in the discussion, and I thank Mr. Deterker for coming to council.
Thank you, councillor Melick. Councillor Demora indicated he had another question. I'll move first to other councillors. Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Ireland, and thank you, Mr. Deterker, for coming today. I just wanted to speak to a comment I think you heard about recycling and that we don't recycle glass or tin, but I'm quite quite positive I might look to administration for some clarification, but I think glass is the only thing that we don't recycle as it's not recycled in the province anymore. Is that correct?
Your worship for councillor Hall, glass is the most, one of the most challenging, other than maybe those clamshell plastics, but let's focus on glass and tin. So tin, there continues to be a market. Administration at the operations centre has actually invested in a baler. So we can, all the tin that is collected is baled and then sent off. It is a marketable commodity that there's a price for that fluctuates. I can't speak to what that that price is, you know, what we can get for selling our our baled tin, but there is a market for that. That market is variable with prices going up and down. Glass, unfortunately, there is no reprocessing, recycling, remanufacturing capacity and essentially no market for glass. And this is one of the challenges of of recycling, I think broadly, is that that transparency ends with, you know, consumers doing what they believe is a good thing of cleaning and and depositing it in a specific spot. Many municipalities, I think, because of public expectations, continue to support glass recycling. But other than refundables that you would take to a bottle depot, there is no reprocessing or recycling capacity in Alberta or or any market for it, really. Many municipalities, when they collect glass, they can find a what I'll call downcycling or reuse opportunity. I know that some will, you know, crush the glass and use it as landfill cover. It ends up in the landfill. I mean, let's let's be honest with that, but you know, it is at least some kind of reuse rather than just dumping it in a sort of untreated state. But this is not specific to Jasper. It is across Canada that there really is not a wide market for glass recycling other than refundals.
Thank you for that. See no other hands. So councillor Demora, you had a further question?
Well, just a further clarification on the actual numbers and percentages and I and it's okay if you don't have that here. I just, I understood that when I was looking at it from the residential portion, fifty eight point nine percent came from consumption and then the rest came from the other two. On the commercial side, a certain amount came from consumption and then like, so those two were separate. And that's why I think the numbers might appear to be a little skewed.
Yeah, your worship for councillor Demora. So if I understood what Mr. The calculation Mr. Deterker was was doing was essentially taking the total cost for all things related to water or sewer and dividing them by that total cost by the volume of consumption. And I think I understood that that's the way that that you're doing.
Independently, I have the same figures for sewer. Right? And and the capital fees are slightly different, but
Correct.
Way higher than than the actual consumption fee for consumers.
Exactly. And so so the difference in the numbers is, and and again, I think different ways of looking at things and Mr. Deterker is, you know, sort of taking all those things that are related to things that come out of the pipes or go down the pipes and saying, let's look at that cost by volume. The, and and that is legitimate, and it is not the way that our billing, you know, our our system is set up, our budgeting system and the whole utility model is built. Our utility model says there is a cost of having capacity available, even if somebody used zero water. You know, I think the discussion at the council table been it benefits everyone, even somebody who isn't at their home for a couple of months, to have fire hydrants available. And so even if there was zero consumption, that resident or that property should probably be contributing to that on demand availability of the system. Right? And so that's where the, that's where, and that is a part of the reason why we went with this triple C model, saying that there is some portion of the system that all of us, you know, all rate pairs, utility pairs should contribute towards on a regular basis because we know that it's a need, whether you used any water or not. And and that's reflected generally through the connection charge. So that's sort of flat fee that is based on the size of service that you have, and it doesn't go up and down per month. You know, it is one number, but it isn't related to volumes. The capital charge, again, is based on the size of your service connection, and that does vary. So as you have a larger service connection and presumably would consume more, you're going to be paying more towards the infrastructure that supports your use. So Mr. Deterker's calculation is, I certainly won't go with his numbers. I'm sure that they're correct. But it's a different way of looking at things and our utility rate model is it was intentionally built to separate out volume. I think traditionally the municipality had had a this much per cubic meter of water. Flat rate, no matter how many cubic meters you used, it was the same rate. The thing that has changed in ours in an intention and effort to try to influence people's consumption is the more water you consume in Jasper, you start to pay a higher rate. And we've had discussions about that before, whether it should be actually the other way around. If you consume more, maybe you should get a lower rate, but the model right now is set up that as you increase your consumption, and you can see in the by law that the attachment that shows the the fee schedule shows, you know, as you increase your consumption up to thirty five cubic meters, you pay a rate of sixty eight cents per your water. Once you go beyond thirty five cubic meters, you go to seventy cents. You go beyond sixty six cubic meters, you pay eighty five cents per cubic meter. And if you go over five hundred cubic meters of consumption, you pay a dollar ten. So you can see there's that, you know, increasing scale. So the more you consume, the more you pay on the consumption charge. And you make a flat fee contribution towards either capital or those sort of underlying items through the capital charge and connection charge. So again, no debate about the math that Mr. Deterker did. It is about sort of the the principles that the systems are built on, and they are not solely based on consumption.
Thank you, Mr. Given. Councillor Hall.
Thank you very much, worship. Okay, so when I look at it and I, and if I'm taking it from the optics of a resident and try to do the calculations like Mr. Deterker did, which I appreciate you taking the time on. If I'm sitting at home and trying to make sense of it, I look at the schedule here, the schedule that's that's there doesn't make sense to, you know, going through even the presentation that administration gave at last week's regular meeting. So I'm just is there a way to have like an X's and O's kind of breakdown for people that have a difficulty understanding? I know it takes a lot of time, but I, the 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 information that's in the schedule is very self explanatory, but if the numbers aren't matching up with what people understand, then I think that there's, there should be a better way to communicate that to the public. I'm not saying do it for one individual because I think that Mr. Deterker has some confusion, as do I on on the on the numbers myself, so.
Thank you, your worship. So certainly administration wants to try to make the information as transparent and understandable as possible to the public. If there's a need. If there's a need to provide, you know, maybe in our utility billings, a bit more of a breakdown about, you know, sort of the impacts. That's certainly something we can we can do. The report that was brought to council at the last meeting that had a customer impact. We tried, we did our best to try to make some examples based on, you know, sort of the live data and the types of customers you would see. So we gave a some estimates and a comparison of the change from twenty three, twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four proposed for a residential consumer that would consume twenty cubic meters on a one less than one inch connection line. And then we did what we called a small commercial and medium commercial, and you can see the difference. So we tried to illustrate it so that people could say, okay, what class am I generally in? And obviously, the volume that people consume can change month to month. Some people may consume more water in the summer when they're, you know, watering their their flower beds. So without sort of having a personalized tailored every month, well, I guess that's what your bill is, is your personalized tailored every month breakdown of what you paid. Administration tried to identify some broad categories that would be generally representative and give people some indication of what's changing or what will the cost change be? And that was provided at the last council meeting. And there's always room for improvement in the type of information that we share and how we break it down.
Thank you. That's good.
Any other questions for Mr. Diederker? It appears not. Thank you for your attendance. Good to hear from you. We appreciate that. You have raised, as I have noted, at least for myself, questions about the equitable or fair apportionment of of costs within the utility system, whether or not there's an incentive in fact to to save water and whether the the costs are equitably equitably apportioned both among residential ratepayers and as between residential and commercial. And you have raised the issue of recycling. I appreciate that. But and we had confirmation that as much as we attempt to recycle glass in particular, and you've noted that people are now watching glass that is it's clean glass to go in in the landfill. Appreciate those those comments. I will say council will now consider potentially at least a motion for their third reading of bylaw number two fifty nine. And just for clarity, the reason for the special meeting is particularly this bylaw, which requires a third reading so that we can advertise rates for the next utility building. That is why we're having this special meeting. So opportunity that you raise these issues, I I thank you for your presentation and I turn it now to council if there is a councillor prepared to make a motion and then we can debate third reading of bylaw number two fifty nine. Deputy Mayor Wilson?
I'd make I'd make the motion that council read for third time bylaw number two fifty nine, being a bylaw specializing in the municipality of Jasper in the province of Alberta to provide for the levying and collection of fees, the provision of water, sewer, solid waste and recycling services in two thousand and twenty four.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Your motion, do you wish to speak to it at all? Any other councillor wish to to speak to the motion? Councillor Keller-Hampe?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering if we down the road, you know, we're at the third reading. We need to move forward in order to get the utility bills out. Maybe we should have a workshop on on how we move forward for the future. Like, do we really need to, we look at our three C model, is it working? Is it equal for everybody? And I think that as Mayor Ireland raised in point out in our last meeting about it being equal and fair, maybe we should have a workshop on that moving forward for the twenty twenty by budget.
Thank you. Councillor Keller-Hampe? I will speak in favor of the motion. That is, I we do need to finalize third reading of this bylaw that I I do support and have supported council reviewing the allocation of of costs within the model. I I am satisfied that council is on the right track with the triple C model, for all the reasons Mr. Given explained earlier. But it is whether or not we have in fact achieved the fairness and equity that we are looking for. So I I would welcome that opportunity as a either at a workshop as suggested or potentially at our strategic priority session. Although it's maybe not quite in the same nature, but I I agree. On the other hand, we have to get these out and I personally remain committed to utilities being self-funded. And this model achieves self-funding. It's just a question of whether it allocates appropriately, but I I will vote in favor of the motion. Councillor Ratcher?
I just wanted to echo the the comments that you have made along with councillor Keller-Hampe. I think we absolutely must move forward now, but that reviewing it again and ensuring that we have reached equity is important.
Councillor Melick?
Thank you, worship. Also speak in favor of the motion and I also wanted to add the current fees and our triple C model is achieving in the longer term what we talked about at the beginning of of the term here three years ago. What we're trying to achieve is that the underfunding of the capital portion to replace our sewer and water infrastructures built into this current model. And I think we lose sight of that when we talk strictly about fairness and equity. I think we need to also ensure we're talking about long-term planning and how we achieve that in the fairness and equity as well. But I am in favor of this motion.
Thank you councillor Melick. Councillor Demora?
I'm gonna vote against it and simply for the fact that, you know, I understand that our old model wasn't sufficient and it didn't work well for what we needed to do and and our capital replaced it. I understand why we have the functions in place under utilities for the recapitalization and and operation of the sewer treatment plant of replacing garbage cans and and all those other things, fire hydrants and infrastructure. And I do believe that they belong under utilities. But for the sake of those that are still having some confusion out there, not understanding the process. I think it's, you know, I I think it's worthwhile, even though we're gonna take a look at it again to just, you know, I think I'm just being a healthy skeptic. That's all. Thank you.
Any other councillors wishing to speak to the motion? See no hands. I will call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? There's one opposed. That motion is carried. That concludes the matters on the special meeting agenda. Might I have a motion to adjourn at eleven thirty five AM? Councillor Hall, thank you. All those in favor? We are adjourned.
I was worried that that one had to be unanimous, so I voted yes.
Yes, we're back from recess of the committee of the whole meeting and we're on item seven point two still and Mr. Given was gonna carry on.
Absolutely. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. That was a different kind of recess than I think we might remember from the school days. It was a working recess perhaps, but I will launch into the the balance of the transit update, specifically focused on the service disruption, which I know council and the community have some questions about. And it really does lead to the fact that there is administration's recommendation is that council develop a transit service standards policy. And so we've had a number of discussions about the need or the utility, the use of having standards so that it provides guidance to administration, transparency for users in the community. And that we have an absence of that right now, given the new nature of our system. And I think speaking about that in the context of the service disruption a couple of weekends ago is is really illustrates the case. So as council knows, on January thirteenth, Jasper Transit canceled approximately two and a half hours of morning service due to a series of issues that exhausted our contracted operator's supply of operational buses. And I'll just speak to that too because under our contract, we do have requirements, you know, we we have a service uptime expectation for our contractor. We spell out expectations for them to be able to provide roadworthy, ready buses and drivers to fulfill the obligations under the contract. And there's a reason why we have backup units. We don't have just one bus in Jasper. We have actually three through our contractor. With the understanding that at different times, one of those buses or multiple of those buses could be out of service. So in this case, approximately five days before the service disruption, one unit was noted that there is a potential safety hazard with a loose overhead storage bin. And so that unit was taken out of service until that could be rectified in order to ensure safety for for riders. That left our contractor with two operating units. Then overnight on the twelfth, a second unit experienced a broken window. We presume that it was from the extreme cold temperatures, but essentially one window popped out midway through the bus. And so that unit wasn't available for service that morning. And then finally, that morning, administration was made aware that the contract was unable to access their final unit due to mechanical issues in the cold. So the intention certainly spelled out in our contract is that the service provider needs to have more than one unit so that we have better service reliability. And in this case, it showed that there's an extent to that. And we reached the end of the the amount of units that the contractor had available. Based on that information, administration chose to cancel the morning service and resume in the afternoon at the regular time of three fifty five, three thirty five PM. Important for council and the public to know that the way our service schedule is currently set up, we have morning service and then we take a break at about eleven fifteen. And then there is no transit service during the mid part of the day and then it restarts at three thirty five. So administration looked at the schedule and said, okay, there's this morning of service. And it was the morning that was canceled and then the service resumed in that afternoon time. Administration made the decision to cancel the service and I won't go through the stats and the charts that council can see that there that, as previously discussed, the morning routes on weekends are generally, although not all, but generally very underutilized, often having zero riders. So in the absence of any other direction or guidance, recognizing the extreme conditions and the limited number of customers likely to be impacted, administration said, okay, we're going to cancel this morning of service and restart in the afternoon. Administration was made, did communicate that out to the public. Approximately ten oh three in the morning, the municipality posted our first service alert about the cancellation to our social media accounts. And then at eleven fifteen, we posted an update about the expected afternoon resumption of the service. As a result of that public communication, we did have some, one individual sort of identified that they had been impacted by the service disruption. We reached out directly to them and made an offer of to provide sort of a courtesy compensation, which I think is just good business. And we also put that out more broadly in our later update to say if there was anybody else that was impacted that they should contact us so that we could follow up with some a courtesy one-month pass, recognizing that it was most likely to be locals. We thought that that one month of free service would be, you know, a nice courtesy gesture. My understanding is that so far we've had just that one contact. As of writing this report, there may have been others since. Moving forward, to prevent a situation like this in the future, administration is going to work on improving our public communication to ensure that riders have more timely data about the location of buses and the status of the service. I think as discussed earlier, we are moving, have been actually for quite some time moving forward with building the systems that are needed to support that real-time vehicle location information. I spoke with our contractor provider last week. They expect the automatic vehicle locators, the GPS systems to be installed in the buses early this week or this week. I will be following up with them to make sure that that happens. And once it does, then we'll be able to direct users to where they can find that real-time info. So if they're heading out to a stop, they'll know about how far the bus is away. And if they're at the stop for an extended period of time, they'll be able to check the location of us to see where it's at. This, we also have worked to reaffirm with our contracted partner that we have an expectation of them to meet the requirements under the contracts to take appropriate measures to provide service reliability. We do, we don't in the contract specify the methods or the, you know, the vehicles, other than the standards that we expect any sort of vehicles to meet and driver training. And it did leave a bit of a gap about for administration about what other standards we might need to consider in terms of the operation. So in the absence of any other guidance, as I said before, administration chose to cancel that service based on that low ridership. And we expect to hold our contractor to account to provide the service and the vehicle uptime that's specified in their contract. But this did, as mentioned, really raise the fact that there is a gap and a need for potential for improvement in establishing service standards for transit through council policy. This is not uncommon. There are a number of other communities, including easy to find examples of Edmonton and Saskatoon, which have council policies on transit service standards. The service standards will often provide guidance on the type of service the municipality will provide. You know, we spoke earlier about fixed route versus on-call or, you know, dial-a-bus or on-demand. So there's different types of service. We don't have a council policy that gives us direction on, you know, sort of intent on in that. Where and how a transit service is delivered and to what level? And that could mean frequency, timing, you know, length of routes, all other sorts of things. These policies will often establish minimum service levels and service performance. Can align the characteristics of the service and they provide, they will often also provide guidelines to administration on implementation of new services. So again, an example I referenced earlier is in our change to the winter schedule, administration is using our authority in the absence of any other guidance to establish two new stops. We're attempting to do that in line with what I think is generally accepted industry best practice about the radius and the distance that people should have to walk to get to their nearest stop. But we don't have any other guidance from, you know, from council specifically or or any other source to say that our approach should vary. Or whether there are limitations on how administration would establish new stops, new routes or anything else. So administration's recommendation is that as a result of the disrupt, the service disruption and in order to support the ongoing evolution and development of Jasper Transit, a transit service standards policy would be appropriate. The development of a policy like this would allow council and the public to contribute to establishing what the key determining factors are and how the transit service evolves. And would include items like when and how service might be canceled, under what conditions, communication approaches and other standards, some of which I referenced before. I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have about the disruption or about the recommendation. Again, administration's recommendation is that council the committee direct administration to develop a transit service standards policy and return to a future committee of the whole meeting.
Thanks for that, Mr. Given. Councillors, any questions for Mr. Given?
Mayor Anderson? I'll start this time. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Through you to Mr. Given and not related specifically to disruption, just the the recommendation for a policy, I I'm supportive of that recommendation. But I recognize that council's role continues to be governance and even with a policy, there will be administrative procedures. I recognize that operational decisions need to be made and they do not fall within the realm of council. So it seems to me that whatever policy we might construct there will still be a requirement for administrative decision making. And that is more likely to be in the administrative procedures than in the policy itself. What I would like to see somewhere is articulation of the factors that are to be taken into consideration for, say, cancellation in this instance. I can appreciate that from an operational perspective, you can look at all sorts of of existing data to determine whether or not there ought to be a cancellation in particular circumstances. But it seems to be one of the factors or some of the other factors to take into account are, for example, council's strategic priorities, so particularly preventing vulnerability and dealing with those who are vulnerable, so at minus thirty some degrees. There might be vulnerable people waiting for a bus. I don't know that there were, but it's a consideration that ought to enter into operational decision making. And a more difficult one is sort of the social community context of the decision making. And I I don't expect employees in the operations department to have to fine tune political decisions. But there are real consequences of operational decision making that impact, say, council at this level. And somewhere I would hope that in either the policy or the administrative procedures, there is a recognition that any service disruption, interruption or disruption goes beyond operations and falls into councils realm of governance. And I don't anticipate that council ought to be in a position where it makes such decisions. But I would hope that the administrative procedures recognize that there is an absolute need to take those sorts of considerations into account.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, yeah, absolutely. Administration wouldn't put council in a position of having to make day to day operational calls. And, you know, the the development of our transit system should be aligned with council's strategic priorities. The challenge becomes that sometimes the strategic priorities are conflicting, have taken in isolation. So support for vulnerable persons could be a conflict with value for dollar. And so a resident who comes to council and says, I saw a bus with nobody on it. Why are we paying for that? Is probably looking at value for dollar. Are we getting good value for dollar out of this municipal service? Somebody else might say, it is great that that service is there, even if it's empty, because if somebody needs it, they know that it's there. And so that's where a council, you know, that's the level that we would hope to engage council in in the policy to be able to provide some guidance on how does how how should the community expect these sometimes competing priorities? What is the balance to be had? That certainly is, I think, outside of administration's area of of control or influence. Because it would be inappropriate for us to decide which of your policy, your strategic priorities are more important. And we have some good, good recent examples of how municipal policies set by council can contain more specific guidance than maybe they've provided in the past. I think historically, a lot of our policies are essentially a one paragraph that says the municipality will do a thing. But it doesn't give any further guidance than that. A more sort of current example would be the municipal employee housing policy adopted in just a year ago. And it provides some very specific guidance about who the policy applies to, what the standards are, you know, how you, how, what rate, you know, the municipality will charge its employees that access staff housing, what we'll do that under, and there's a specific numbers in there, how long people can use it for. So council has given specific high level guidance that the, there's a detailed administrative policy about how to implement that guidance. And I would expect to see a similar thing with the transit system where key service characteristics are defined by council and then the administrative policy would follow to say, okay, now that these key characteristics are defined, how do you go about implementing them? That's good.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I just want to thank P W T. On the morning of the third jeans, they came up with an alternative. They wanted to contract a third party. So my understanding of the contract is that with P W T, we hire them to produce service three hundred and sixty-four days a year. I believe they don't run Christmas Day, maybe three sixty-three they don't run, New Year's Day. So in order for their service to work, we all work in the tourism service here in Jasper. We service our locals, we service our tour, our visitors. So we keep going and we do whatever measure we need to do in order to provide good service. On that day, P W T wanted to contract a third party to make sure the vulnerable were taken care of at minus forty. If they don't have enough drivers, they contract a third party to drive their buses. So I don't understand why, if we contract a company, they provide the service, they provide the service excellence. Isn't that what we're paying them for? So I still pay P W T that day. So why are we getting involved in the day to day service? That's what I don't understand. Like, if we have contracted a company to provide this for us, like, it's just like if we have contracted somebody to pick up the snow and their trucks broke down and they brought another company and hint and to pick up the snow for us, we're still providing that level of service. So, you know, I mean, to me, the service should go. You know, I mean, every other company in town, the restaurants open. If they have to get their person on contract to fix their sewer, they bring somebody in to fix their sewer. Really, should we be getting into the weeds of that? To us, we're paying somebody taxpayers' good money of over half a million a year to run this service for us. I think we should be letting them do it.
Counselor Noda?
Well, just expanding on that, because I did have a couple of comments, but I just administration point of view, if Mr. Given had any feedback on that that train of thought and just like, what are the actual contractual obligations in that matter?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, so for Counselor Demota, you know, I think Counselor Kellerhampe is correct. You know, we have a contract that specifies a number of hours of service that need to be provided, metrics around driver training and, you know, certification of fleet units and a number of other things. But we don't say that every driver must be named Bob. I'm being, I'm being obviously facetious, but you know, we don't get down to that level in detail. There is some latitude. I have heard, you know, very specific comments that the municipality needs to hold our contractor to account for being able to provide this service on their own two feet. And that's what we did in this case. I think that we haven't previously established a standard that says that you may or may not provide buses with a certain kind of deckling. For example, we have the contractor, you know, we had one bus go to service due to an accident. We allowed the contractor to provide another unit from their own fleet that doesn't have Jasper Transit deckling. I'm not happy about that. I want to see a deckel of Jasper Transit. We provide a consistent service to the public. Is that a council expectation? Should we drive any bus? How do we, you know, and again, there's no guidance right now, so administration is exercising its best judgment. But I believe that the delivery of a municipal service needs to have some level of consistency. And I certainly have heard from council and the community that there's an expectation that the contractor should be able to provide a service that they committed to on their own two feet without having to rely on others. And so I suppose when they ran out of buses, we said, geez, that's too bad that you ran out of buses. I guess it's going to impact the delivery of service. And that's going to impact, you know, the the level that you're able to respond to the contracted commitments that you made. So we can have that discussion with our contractor provider. And in terms of the, you know, contracting out to third parties, I'm sure that's a benefit to that third party. More business for them, and I think that's probably great. And I think for the operator, we need to ensure that our relationship with our contractor partner is an appropriate one where as the municipality, we determine the service standard, which we do with snow removal, you know, the example that was raised of letting a contractor bring in a third party to do snow removal. I think our operations team would have some very specific expectations of training, equipment and the delivery of that service. We don't just let a third party deliver a service with no oversight from administration.
I think, I think that information is valid for the most part in my mind. I just want to to make a little, a bit of a reflection on the social media aspect of it. I had my phone on on Saturday, but I wasn't near it. And then I heard it ping and it started to ping and, you know, maybe it's just because I've been around for a while. I'm just used to getting texts when stuff goes down and I knew the Leafs weren't playing at that time, so it wasn't people updating me something happened at a hockey game. I knew right away something was going on in the municipality. So I looked, I went on Facebook and, you know, one thing that I learned during the pandemic, during lockdown, and we were going through a lot of things. Because it was a cold day, more people were at home on social media probably or on their tablets or phones. Same thing back in three years, four years ago now. I think one thing that's important to learn is that there's people that have a hate on for the municipality and they're vocal. And when something happens, they're going to be the first ones to jump on. And there are other people that, you know, just like to stir the pot and they're going to jump on. So when things start to stir, a lot of that isn't representative of, like I used, I like the term fox poppy line because it just sounds smart, but it's not the the voice of the people. And I just want to remind people of that. And then when you see stuff stirring on on the internet or whatever it is, just to just look at where it's coming from and how it's being delivered. A lot of my feedback that I gave is that I think something good will come of this. I do understand the concern. On the surface, I did personally feel a bit riled about the situation, but I knew that there was like some, you know, good judgment that was put behind it. And then we'll find out, you know, particularly the reason behind it and we'll get some stats and and that'll roll out and then, you know, in hindsight, twenty twenty, I think I understand the decision that was made and, you know, whether it's the right one or the wrong one, it was the right one for those people at that time. And, you know, and I appreciate, you know, administration coming forward and and being vulnerable to to expose that. And I I think it was, it was a good decision at the time. So when I reflect on all the information that's, and for those people out there that were affected, you know, whether you relate for work or Mr. Meeting and stuff, I think one month free service that I think, you know, if you were late for lunch that day or something like that, I think it was a good compensation. I hope no one got hurt. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Counselor Demota. Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Well, canceling bus services is not uncommon. As I follow the Rome Public Transit Facebook page and that weekend, there was a lot of service disrupted and a lot of service canceled. And I wonder if that might be a platform that the municipality could potentially look at for communication. I do echo Counselor Kellerhampe's sentiments and Counselor Boxer earlier at the seven point one in our meeting. This is a new service. It's absolutely in the spotlight. And as we work towards changing our residents' minds and how they move around our 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 town, this will take some time and we need to absolutely ensure that we're consistent and we can build trust. Yeah, the the only thing I just wanted to maybe question about Counselor Keller, Kellerhampe had said about over half million dollars of our taxpayers' money, but I'm quite sure that a lot of it's funded. We have over half of it is funded from external sources, and I believe there's probably a visitor paid portion that goes to it as well. Are you able, CEO Given, to give us the number that comes from tax taxes, municipal taxes? I'm sorry, that might just be putting you on the spot, but I I know it's, not the whole, the whole thing is not funded by taxpayer dollars. I just wanted to make that clear.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, for Counselor Hall, yes, I believe I can actually pretty quickly. So because this was all relatively recently in the in the budget discussions. And I'm going through to see, but as referenced earlier, the municipality has received money from both Parks Canada and the school boards. And so that's in the order of about three hundred thousand dollars. And then additionally, we are supporting the operation of the system through the Public Transportation and Parking Reserve, which is funded through visitor paid parking. So there's about two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars towards the service that is coming essentially from visitor paid parking. And so the balance would be taxpayer dollars, so, which is obviously a minority of that, you know, six hundred and some thousand dollar twenty twenty-four operating budget. You know, probably in the order of about a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, I'm sure. Thank you. Thank you very much for that, CEO Given. And I also echo Counselor Demota's sentiments about, you know, being vulnerable and coming, coming to us with the questions from what we saw weekend on social media. And I really appreciate this update. Thank you.
Counselors, anything further? Oh, then Counselor Melvin there? No. Well, earlier we gave the opportunity for individuals in public to, or in the audience to come up and address council. I just wouldn't want to not give that opportunity to anybody in the audience currently, if it was all right with council, if anybody would like to speak regarding the this or transportation item, I totally invite you. If, Counselors, that's okay. If you may, Sandra, come to the mic, introduce yourself, please. And yeah, we'll give you the opportunity to speak.
My name is Sandra Coe. I am obviously a resident of Jasper and also sit on the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce Board. I guess I I like the direction that we're going with creating some service policy standards. It's unfortunate that they were not created prior to the inception of the service. And that going forward, as we build out the transit program that not just service standards, but our performance standards, if we're going to build a multi-million dollar facility for electric buses, that we don't find ourselves in this position down the road of being that that council and the municipality is subjecting itself to criticism because the i's are not dotted and the t's are not crossed. I I feel that there needs to be some caution. We tend to write off social media, but as, and the opinions expressed on social media. Those opinions used to be expressed in letters written. And it was always said that one person takes the time to write a letter on a specific subject, that that letter represents the opinions and ideas of over a hundred individuals. I'm not sure where I got that stat or where it came from, but that is something that I've always been told. And I am sure that there's probably significant data out there. It's easier for Facebook to collect it than others. But that the opinions and, and I agree, sometimes distasteful way in which it is shared and the criticisms that come to the municipality and and directed at administration. and directed at administration um are significant and they do um, they should not be uh discounted. Um so that's my comment.
Thank you very much. That's true. I appreciate that. I I, you know, the uh one person writing a letter uh is the voice of any for sure. And I I like how you I say that. Um and of course, as well, uh sometimes unfortunately, um they Facebook does lead towards toxicity, uh but sometimes there's a lot of great stuff out of it. And I, yeah, we we have to find ways to harness the goods, the good out of uh out of like that social media platform for sure.
Because it's it's the way people talk, so we need to be listening.
That's right. Uh Counselor Demota?
Yeah, um my phone started buzzing again. And I I think it's related to some of the comments I just made in constant feedback. And I don't want to say that anything that comes through social media is irrelevant. I think it's the hurtful stuff and the way it's delivered is what I was referring to. Um I think it's important to hear what people in the community have to say. And even sometimes people that visit here have to say, which we do get that feedback once in a while as well. So uh you know, just for for clarity, I I wasn't going after uh social media um contributors as a whole. And I apologize for uh maybe buddying that a little bit. I was talking about the hurtful stuff and just uh for people not to take it too personally, that's all. And I know that, you know, uh people have uh, you know, there is administrative staff that have to make decisions. And that's a lot of pressure in a small town, especially with an active social media audience, as well as people that uh are uh significant others, whether your friends, family, or uh, you know, loved ones. They also face that as well because they see it and sometimes they get hurt too. So um in general, that's where I was pointing it at. And again, I just wanted to make some clarity. Thank you.
Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson and thank you Ms. Kinsler uh for coming up to the table. I think the the challenge with social media, and I pay attention, I read comments and I I see as much as I possibly can. I limit myself to certain times of the day now. Um but not all of us are on Facebook. I don't believe our mayor's on Facebook, so he's not seeing any of those those comments. And also uh in conversations with our communications coordinator, if the municipality is tagged in somebody's private post, the municipality doesn't get that. They don't see it. So yes, and it I do agree, there's a lot of great comments on there and it and it sort of, you know, helps us figure out the the temperature out there. I I get so to speak, but not all of us up here see them and not all, not all of, like the municipality won't won't see themselves being tagged in somebody's private post. So absolutely, social media is a way to uh express your opinion. But there are other ways to, you know, get in touch with us via letters, via our uh feedback forms on our website. But I I'm, I do agree that social media, it has a place and I absolutely pay attention to it, but just for the general public, not everybody up here is on Facebook.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, I think uh Maryland would like to finish off.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I I spoke previously about the recommendation for a policy which I continue to support. I said nothing about the disruption, but I I wish just to extend appreciation to staff. Um decision making is always difficult. It doesn't matter what the decision is. It doesn't matter whether it is an administrative decision or a council decision. Our decisions are scrutinized and often criticized. And in this particular case, and I I do understand that social media was alive with um comments and not all of them favorable. And it's it's impossible, I think, from our perspective to have somebody on staff prepared to respond to all of that. So um it takes its own route. But I do recognize that no matter what the decision was, we would be open to criticism. Um and Mr. Given, I appreciate your earlier comments pointing out that one of the criticisms that we would have been open to was to have issued a contractor to somebody who then wasn't able on their own um to fulfill the contract. And I am certain that social media would have commented about that. So um our staff is in a difficult um position and it's it's always twenty twenty hindsight. Um but they responded, um did the best they could. I think that we can um give them a better opportunity for response in the future by moving forward with the policy and the administrative procedures. Um but but it's it's challenging and we are always going to be under the microscope. And it's it's a challenging environment in which to make decisions. So my credit to staff for um engaging and they will have learned as well from from this as did we and as I hope do members of the community.
Thank you for that. Miss, I think that's exhausted questions from comments from council and I'd be looking to council for uh motions if they see fit. Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'm prepared to make the motion if there is no other uh conversation from council. And I again, I want to express appreciation to CEO Given, uh our utilities manager, Michelle, for uh their their time on this. I'm very confident we're moving in the right direction with our public transit. I think that resident feedback is valid and we and it's looked at and we've changed the schedule because because of it. So I encourage residents to get on our website and fill out those forms. Um so I'd like to make the recommendation that committee receive the transit service update from September to December twenty twenty three for information and that committee direct administration to develop the transit service standards policy and return to a future committee of the whole meeting.
Thank you for that. Um counselors, would you like to speak to the motion? Uh um Counselor Demota?
Yeah, you know, and I I just, I wanted to say that I'm going to support this motion because I I think it's valid. Um I didn't, I didn't vote in favor of um this process just to start with. So even some of the comments that I just made about um, you know, the hindsight and everything like that. I I think um it doesn't matter how it was taken. I I think that we're here now and we have to support our staff. Um you know, when you make decisions, you're on the spot. There's a lot of pressure. And I think, you know, we're we're still learning by this. Um I I had some apprehensions and, you know, some of them are coming to the surface. Uh but we're working through it. We're not going to get it right right off the bat. And this is just a a piece of that process that just needs to get nailed down so that we're a little bit more fluid and and being able to respond a little bit more. Um you know, less with with a little bit more direction. Thank you.
Anything further, further counselors before call the question? Um all in favor? They're now opposed. Uh motion is great. Uh I think at this point, we're probably gonna have to break for lunch. We've got a fair amount ahead of us. Um so we're gonna break for uh an hour. Uh return at one fifteen uh and carry on with uh the rest of the agenda. So back to the afternoon edition of the committee of the whole meeting for January twenty thirty. Um we were on, we're just entering the item seven point three, and that's Crisis Team Jasper Society Funding Agreements. Uh I'm gonna look to Mr. Given, but then I'm sure he's gonna pass that on to uh Mr. Reed.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, you are one hundred percent correct. Director Reed has has this item and definitely the following. Director Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Given, Deputy Mayor Wilson and Council. Uh so yes, the item before you is Crisis Team Jasper Society Funding Agreements. And uh the recommendation is that committee direct administration to enter into F one of four funding agreements with the Crisis Team Jasper Society for after hours crisis response, as well as development and implementation of a crisis team advocate recruitment and training program in twenty twenty four as presented. The alternatives are that committee could direct administration only to enter into one of the agreements as described, or committee could direct administration to revise one or both of the agreements and return to a future committee of the whole meeting with those revisions. Um uh council is well aware of this topic and so uh I I won't read every word, but um you know, several years ago, the Alberta government changed the longstanding uh rules around victim service units, and they were no longer allowed to be attached to crisis response teams. And so the standalone VSU services are now administered regionally by the province. Um and those services are uh fully available in out in Jasper to uh residents and visitors who are eligible. Um but crisis teams and municipalities are left to meet the needs of those in crisis who are not impacted by crime in their respective communities. Uh crisis team and crisis response overall was carved off to be dealt with individually by each community. So this has resulted in the Jasper Community Team Society agreeing to host after hours crisis response under their umbrella a couple of years ago. And over the last two years, the JCTS has diligently provided service and worked to develop a functioning crisis team in our community. Also during this time, some members of previous board and structure of the VSU and Crisis Team have worked uh to resume providing this service under a new banner, that of the Crisis Team Jasper Society. Administration recently received the attached Crisis Team Info Seat Info Sheet from the Crisis Team Jasper Society. On November first, uh council received a presentation from Lisa Darrow on behalf of the CTJS asking for continued operational funding. Um and that request is included in the agreement itself attached. At the November twenty first and twenty second budget presentations, council passed the following motion. The motion by Counselor Waxer that committee direct administration to maintain twelve thousand five hundred in funding for after hours crisis support to be assigned to the Crisis Team Jasper Society in twenty twenty four, subject to the development of an F one oh four agreement to be reviewed by council, which is how we end up here today. Um back on November first, council did also receive a request from the Crisis Team Jasper Society to support the development of a robust volunteer advocate recruitment and training program. And that request is included in the draft draft supplementary funding agreement. And I've separated them out on purpose because it is very likely that the annually you will get a request from the Crisis Team Jasper Society for that operational funding. Um and the uh development of a system is almost like a one-off project. And so uh I wanted to be clear about the separation of those two projects. And under discussion, um the attached funding agreement drafts meet the needs of our community based on the data available to administration for the past two years of the Jasper Community Team Society operating the crisis response in Jasper, as well as the casework information from our community outreach services department. Uh to meet the demonstrated needs, which largely focus on homelessness in our community, administration has clarified the definition of crisis as it applies to our community. Um under strategic relevance, of course, uh we have community health uh priorities, relationship priorities, and organizational excellence priorities. Um inclusion considerations, of course, uh accessible, inclusive, and universal crisis response and support is an important way to meet the needs of our diverse community for both residents and visitors and is an important way to follow through on the EDNI uh policy. Um under the financial, there is the, as council requested, twelve thousand five hundred allocated in the approved twenty twenty four operating budget for Crisis Team Jasper Society to deliver uh the after hours crisis response in the community. And it the twelve thousand five hundred that was already given to the JCTS in twenty twenty two, and that's Jasper Community Team Society, uh is has been returned to the municipality. Um uh just happened yesterday. And the twelve thousand five hundred allocated in the twenty twenty three operating budget uh was never given to the Jasper Community Team Society. As uh I mentioned in the background, the Jasper Community Team Society was working to develop this uh system for crisis response in our community. And uh you know, with the uh Crisis Team Jasper Society, uh I don't want to use the word resurrecting because they are a new entity or they will be soon a new entity. Um and that uh it seems like a much better focus to have the Crisis Team Jasper Society work this all out. And so that means that uh the municipality is in possession of that twenty five thousand dollars uh right now. And so there are no additional financial requirements needed to change the twenty twenty four municipal operating budget. And then, of course, there are the attachments, um uh the two F one oh four funding agreements, as well as that Crisis Team Info uh sheet. And I'm happy to take questions.
Counselor Goody.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. It's been through you to Director Reed. So if I understand this clearly, this is front of us for twelve thousand five hundred in twenty twenty four. Will we also be giving them the money for twenty three and twenty two? Or is that going to come back on different? Or we have to make a motion to do that? Or where does that stand?
Uh Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Keller Empi. So uh it stands at the at the will of council. Um they are presented here today because I have all the information to make the F one oh four agreements. But that is exactly why they're separated into two. Uh the operational funding may be a higher priority than council. Uh and and maybe you only want to approve that. Uh however, your it's your purview to do uh both or one or none. But I wanted to make sure that I was meeting the needs of council by presenting.
Thank you.
Counselor, Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Um I have a question about the actual F one oh four itself for C, providing community outreach services with a fund. Are we, is that a normal practice to fund a group that then funds us? I'm a bit confused on that one.
The Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Hall. That's an excellent question. This would be a very unique uh agreement. And I I, one of the uh modifications that I would make to this before council were to approve it would be to change that to access to a fund. We we wouldn't ask for a special fund to be set up. We would ask for access to the fund that they already have. Um and yes, it is a unique situation. Um however, in the previous setup, uh you know, before the the provincial government changed things, when it was combined VSU and Crisis Team, council regularly funded twelve thousand five hundred in the past and community outreach service would regularly access that exact funding to support the needs of uh residents and visitors in our community. So the relationship was never this clearly outlined. Um and so to be transparent, we are trying to, not trying, we have made every effort to be as clear as we can.
Uh does a follow-up question. What, can you give me an example of what uh a situation that might use this fund of last resort? What would that look like?
Certainly, um if you scroll down to the next page, you will see um the important definition of crisis that uh this definition meets the needs as we have experienced them through our team and through the data that the Jasper Community Team Society has gathered. And so transient homelessness is an excellent example. Uh recently, a a community to our east uh began dismantling homeless camps and we received uh several people directly from uh that community uh who arrived with no resources and no plan and no intention to stay here. They are definitely trying to get to warmer climates. And um you know, one of them was uh sleeping in the rough in front of uh local business. And uh we, you know, uh received that client, uh marched that client through the series of of possible supports that exist through the provincial government and through uh some of our funders. And we found at the end that this person meets our definition of crisis. They have no ability to meet their immediate needs and it was immediate. And uh we were able to secure funding from the Jasper Community Teams, or sorry, the Crisis Team Jasper Society for that individual to get a night's accommodation and uh transportation to the community they were aiming for.
That's about it.
Given that I do know a little bit about this from previous, I wondered if if it was worded uh rather in the way it is that uh or four point three is create a fund of la- create a fund of last resort for addressing immediate needs of clients in of of clients in crisis in Jasper and that costs would have would submit if if required, costs would submit the attached form because the it reads as if it's created for costs, but it's actually created for the needs of the client and the the crisis team themselves would use the form as well. Client and the the crisis team themselves would use the form as well. I don't know if that's helpful.
If if I'm, I mean Deputy Mayor Wilson, Counselor Waxer, um, that's the kind of uh language clarity I'm always open to. And that is in fact how it would operate. One of the reasons why four C reads the way it does now is that administratively. We are um, the current system with Crisis Team Jasper Society is that we reach out every single client. And so uh, we are spending some considerable administrative time. To get, you know, a hundred dollars here or three hundred dollars there when. We're spending uh quite a bit of salary time to do that. And so this uh structure matches or or mimics what we do with the caring community fund. Uh, in in relation to the Jasper Community Team Society. When we have a need of the caring community fund, we go through uh the, all the, you know, paths available, funds available, funders available. And then at the end, if there's no other uh reasonable uh fund or available fund, the. Caring Community Fund is used. It is, we don't ask permission every time. We have a standing agreement that says we understand the rules and we follow those rules successfully. And we meet, uh, you know, in theory, we'd aim quarterly to say whether or not that's all working as it should. And that's the system that that is proposed here, um, because that's uh. The efficient way that we know already works with a different organization. Yeah, I think that that explains it.
Counselors, I I didn't see any, yeah.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, I have in fact. Four brief questions, but I'll start on the one that you've answered twice now, that is um, foreseen. Regardless of. Changing the initial words so that. Um, there's access to a fund rather than one for. I note that the word used in the second line is. Clients in crisis and that is different than. Um, previous clauses that refer to residents and visitors or individuals on foundations. So, is the use of clients intentional to suggest that this is for. Existing clients of costs as opposed to. Other residents or visitors who could be in crisis but aren't eligible for this. Funding of last resort is is an intentional use of the word client group?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to through to uh Mayor Ireland. Uh, the short answer is, I would clarify that by putting residents and visitors. Uh, we consider anyone who comes through the door to be a client, so that's our shorthand, however, I understand that um. Could easily be interpreted the way you have done so, sir, and we would change that for sure, uh, I think. That's just shorthand crept in, um, but most of the clients. And and like I said, we consider them clients as soon as they walk through the door, most of them are not current, current uh outreach. Clients or longstanding uh individuals that we are working with, so yes, I would change that thing for sure.
Thank you for that, I, and I ask apart because there is a fun setup under. The Community Team Society that is specific for existing clients. So the.
Correct.
The wording is. Paragraph nine um requires an annual report. And I wonder whether that might also say including financial statements. It's, I think council is moving toward a position where all requests for external funding are to come with. Financial statements, so. It it's not included and I just suggest that it might be included. And then finally, uh, well, not quite finally, but my third of four observations is just the definition of crisis. It appears to me, and perhaps this is intentional that. A crisis is entirely subjective and it's. The person who is subjected to the crisis gets to decide, like there's, as I read this, there is no. Objectivity, a crisis could be a chronic situation, uh, it could be. Almost anything, but the wording says any situation. Um, which makes it difficult for someone. And it it just seems to me that the, the crisis fund. Is intended to be beyond, a response to something beyond the norm. Um, and yet when you use words that it's, crisis is defined as any situation regardless of instigating event. Um, then it becomes as much a fun for. Chronic vulnerability as, as an emergent crisis or situation, so. I wonder how you've addressed that, or how David addressed.
Uh, you, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to uh Mayor Ireland, uh, I would. Just going to that definition. Just come some of the sort of. Language that we use that that maybe I'll explain a bit, so we have an individual having difficulty coping. Regardless of instigating event, um, and it is important, uh, because. Most of the time, there isn't a traumatic event. Uh, directly related, I'll I'll give you the example of that individual that came from that community to our east. Uh, they had a traumatic event there, but when they got here. Do we count that three or four days ago as the instigating event, would that be traumatic? Likely it would, what if that trauma was four months ago and it took them that long to get here? Um, and so for us, it's about the ability to cope and. Uh, n- not necessarily how they got here, this inability to cope. Um, that's the universal part of what we aim to provide and what. The, again, I'll use the phrase client load, but what the case files indicate is that. If we were to say it's only traumatic incidents that get you here, we would be saying no to several people. Uh, possibly several people a month, um, in the last couple of weeks, it would have been several people in a week. Um, and so that, I think that's important, but secondarily at the bottom or near the end. When we say needs immediate direct help, that's important too. We're not here to say, oh, in three weeks you might need help with your rent, that's not, you're not in crisis at that time. You are right now in front of us presenting with an immediate need, that means right now need. So you don't know where you're going to sleep tonight and it's minus forty, that's an immediate need. Uh, but you don't know where you're going to sleep in three days, that's a different issue. And we do have um, standard operating procedures that we say. Uh, our typical response is one night and transportation. We, that's immediate to us, it's not about you're here for the weekend, well, here we'll take care of you, that's not what we're doing here. Um, so I I, that word immediate carries a lot of clarification.
Thank you for that, um, last brief comment, um, the opening line. Number one. Um, I just wonder whether we might describe the municipality of Jasper as a funder. Crisis team receives funding from lots of sources, um, we are one of many. We are a funder, uh, but don't wish to leave a suggestion that we are a deep. Crisis Team Jasper Society.
I I wouldn't mind jumping in there, um, um, and then open it back up to council, but uh. Did the crisis team provide this crisis definition, or have we decided to provide a definition? Which then. Loads a lot more of uh, you know, crisis, you know, it's, it's a tough thing to nail down. Onto the the Jasper Crisis Team. I think it's a, a lot of this is above and beyond their mandate, so if I I would like to get them in the room to 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 ask them. Are you guys comfortable with this new definition of crisis and and can you uh, meet all of these new requirements? Because it does seem like there's, there's more requirements being put on them for. What is maybe not, not a huge amount of their budget, I don't know what their budget is, but uh. Yeah, I say, I I guess, what, what does the crisis team, uh, how do they feel about this uh, uh, contract?
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor Hall, uh, Wilson, um, the, so. Uh, to be clear, um, over the past few months, uh, working in collaboration with. Uh, the Crisis Team Jasper Society's administrator. Uh, we have come closer and closer to this definition and. Also, we have not been able to share uh the vision. And so one of the purposes of bringing this in this language is to clarify. The part, and council may remember, a couple of months ago, you had a chart in front of you where we showed you there was a possible gap. And the possible gap was because we didn't have the mandate of the crisis team yet. And now we do have the mandate of the crisis team. If the crisis team is not going to meet the needs of the gap, which based on our data is the biggest need we have in our community. Then I will tell council we have to find another way. And so we have to start somewhere for this discussion. And one of the ways we are approaching it is to say, this is the fund. Council, I know you have stated pretty clearly what you want it to do. So that's why this is reading this way, I've taken all of your comments, all of your feedback. And all of the work that as the staff we deal with on a weekly basis, uh, during the cold spell, we housed more than five people. And that's one day, that was Friday, so we're not, it's not a small thing that we're dealing with. Um, and so, uh, for us to be act as the funder, this is the contract that we need to fulfill. If the Crisis Team Jasper, who, let's be clear, gets to make their own mandate. They are not held by VSU or Solgen or anybody else telling them what their mandate needs to be. So they get to make their end. And if they choose to accept this mission, then we have funding for them. If they don't fill the gaps in our community, then I'm going to come to you and say, here are some options on how we do that.
They fill a gap, they probably don't fill all the gaps and maybe that's not the mandate, right? So, you know, the 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 museum fills a gap, you know, and and I don't feel that there's that much restrictions put on. A lot larger uh money, who is except, like they are an outside uh, uh, entity requesting. Funding, right, so I I don't think they have to fill all our gaps and I don't think like uh. Making them re- responsible for filling a gap in domestic abuse or homelessness, I. I don't feel comfortable loading that all onto them.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, that's, that's an excellent point of conversation, I will say that in all the cases thus far. I will just add that in all the cases thus far, the Crisis Team Jasper Society has funded these clients. So, so far, we have seen they are able to find it within their mandate. Well, what has been one of the challenges is not knowing every time if this one is going to be funded and the next one might not be. And so that's the clarity we're going for here, we're, we're trying to do a streamlined, efficient system that allows us to meet the needs of those that present. Um, and so you you're, I would not sit here and demand that they change their mandate. I would offer, there is a contract available to do this work. If they can find it in their mandate, there are people. If they can't, we're going to find another way, is what I would tell you from what you have presented as your wishes. And what professionally we know we're dealing with at the office.
So just to follow up, and I'll then pass on to uh Mr. Givens, so with other, you know, outside groups that come to us for funding. We don't give them a contract and say, would you like to fill this? With, you know, you collaborate with them and and build it, and this is what we can, this is what we do in the community, we did with the funding to do this. Right, so we don't build a contract and say, hey, do you want this? Right, so I I feel like they may be getting treated differently than outside, other outside entities that come to us.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, I'll just say that, you know, certainly administration is working to establish these F one oh four agreements of better defined relationships between the municipality and and. An organization that we have some type of relationship with, um, you know, there's these longstanding contributions, uh, you know, to the museum, the museum's a good example. Because unlike the library, you know, the library has its own legislation, there's a bit of a different nature of the relationship. With the museum, there's a longstanding relationship and a broad mandate, you're the supervisory, yeah, um, where in this one. The discussion that I think administration has heard is that there's a concern about a certain gap, not all of the gaps. Are to meet all of the crisis response needs and all the various flavors. But I think that there's uh, certainly from what administration sees in service delivery. And from what we believe we've heard from council, there's a gap in a certain kind of crisis response that. Seems to be falling through the cracks. And what I believe we understood council be saying is we want to address the gaps. And so what's here in the definition of crisis is, is administration's recommendation. On the gap that needs to be filled and a a way to fill that, and if this organization. Is, has the capacity and capability to 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 meet that need and fill that gap. The other portions of, you know, the other challenges are addressed by other entities and other organizations. Um, if council says, this is a grant request and we just give them the money and don't have any expectations, we could also do that. But get the conversation that we understood was, administration, look at crisis. Tell us how the whole system of crisis response works. And identify the gaps, and this is the gap that is not explicitly addressed by anybody. And so administrations, you know, term of measure there is intended to make it explicit, but what we mean by crisis. Because we see that as the, you know, we can show you that that is the gap that nobody is, uh, has a mandate to address specifically. And if this group believes that they can. You know, wishes to fill that gap, um, we've got, you know, some some guidance on, you know. To reference in the disagreement, say, okay, here's what the expectations are, if they say, no, we don't want to do that. Then we would be coming to you and saying, council, um, the group doesn't want to meet this. Do you still want to give them the money, and they can just do with it whatever they want?
Counselor Geller.
Well, and not to jump in on semantics or anything, but you know, within that, it does say examples include. But are not limited to the following, so you're not restricted to. Transient homelessness to help somebody out or domestic violence in that manner and so on and so forth, there's a list there. You know, so there are going to be situations that occur that might not be listed here that, you know, the crisis team will help address. Um, and on the other note, when when we talk about a client, um, you know, we talked about residents and visitors, there are people that are coming through here that. Might not necessarily be a visitor, for an example that you might do, so I don't know, a member of the public, uh, if that's too broad. Of a term, but I I think that there's, you know, there there could be a better one for that too, thank you.
And Counselor Geller.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, I kind of little, agree a little bit with you, um. My understanding of this is, we gave the money before. This for the victim's services and it goes for the nonviolent. And it was kind of like for car crashes, that sort of things, the crisis team could assist those families. So, I kind of thought, this is kind of what we're giving the money for. In the meantime, the group works with cost, should there be some homelessness or something that, um. Costs can't deal with that. And crisis team fits into their mandate, but I didn't think we were kind of going to. A whole criteria of. What the money could be used for, it was twelve thousand five hundred, goes very quick. So, you know, I mean, I saw this group is together. They have somebody on the pole and there's, God forbid, during summer poor crashes and. That twelve thousand five hundred can be enough pretty quick, so. You know, I mean, if then if we're giving them this twelve five and they're saying, oh no, you have to meet this homelessness, this, this and this. Maybe there should be another fund for that, you know, twelve thousand five hundred is not a lot of money here. Yeah.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, um, and along those lines, uh, your comments and Counselor Callahan, please, like I look at the. The contribution request form and what they want the money for is to bring more advocates on. Then I go back to the F one oh four agreement and there's a whole bunch more stuff in there, I'm just wondering if that you came to this with. The crisis team and and like with their help, did you come to? Just looking at the F one oh four and what they will do and, you know, ones through nine. Is much different than what they, I feel what they're asking for at budget time.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Hall, there are two F one oh four agreements here. Very clearly split up into one of them for the annual funding, the twelve five that appears to be the main discussion point. The second F one oh four is for the special project of creating the volunteer advocate training and support system. So those are different requirements. The special project of creating the system of volunteer advocate training and recruitment is. You, you'll see actually the reporting is quite different there. They will have goals for that project. And we will ask them to report on whether or not they did those goals. And to answer, I think a couple of times the words collaboration and do they know and what did they ask for? So that's why their requests are actually included in those two agreements. The basis of the request is what they asked for the money for. The, I, I think we're, we're talking about mandate and we're talking about, you know, whether or not it meets the needs in our community. I do think there's the additional things to consider, like we aren't their only funder. And are we meant to fund them for an ice climbing accident that happens out at the, out at the Icefield Center? Is that what you intended your money to go to? Or is your money for people in Jasper? Because that's a question that, that sounds like you may want to answer with clarity. What this agreement says is for residents and visitors to the community of Jasper. So we are not asking that twelve five to meet the needs of a, a climbing accident out on Morrow Peak. They have other fundraising methods and other funders. You know, that one is a good example of perhaps that's Parks Canada's purview. To be supporting their visitors to their park. I, I couldn't say, but what I can say is what I've tried to do is match what they asked for. The need in our community and the conversations that you've had around this team. The reason that the motion was made by councillor Waxer, that conversation was you wanted clarity on what the gaps were. And what the funding would go to and who would go to. I have done the best I can to meet that, that challenge. And as far as collaboration goes. It has been a challenge to work with the Crisis Team Jasper Society as they are. In their minds rebuilding, but in, in reality, building this new situation. And so the collaboration. I have met several times and in fact, I will say on Monday, I met with the chair and, and the secretary. Of the Crisis Team Jasper Society. That is the first time that I've been able to meet with actual board members as opposed to staff. And that meeting I would, I left feeling very positive. It was a very productive meeting. We had conversations. They are taking this to their board to see if it makes sense for them. So the collaboration I would say is ramping up now, but we have, we have absolutely been working to make that collaboration happen.
Thank you for that, Director Reed, and I apologize for not seeing the difference between the two because they look very similar. And to what you just said. They're taking it back to their board to see if this will work for them. I wonder if we just need to take a pause on this until we. Hear back from Crisis Team Jasper, I'm not really sure. I, I'm comfortable voting on this and like this was, was Monday, yesterday or la- last Monday?
Yesterday.
So they, they are taking back this F one oh four to see if it, if their board grooves or can, they feel that they, they can meet these. Requirements. I just wondered if we should wait. Until we hear back from them and. What do you think?
If, if I may, Deputy Mayor Wilson, the reason it's here is because you asked to see it. It was for you to review. So the conversation we're having, the questions you're asking, the modifications you're suggesting are wonderful. And if council wishes, you could say, make those changes and see and bring it back again after. The group, the Crisis Team Jasper Society, that's of course on you to determine. I would note they have requested to present in February. And perhaps that will also inform the discussion.
Councilor DeMora. Yes, just a couple of. Points for clarification, I guess. Sometimes incidences will happen outside of town and because we're a hub. People get deferred here, whether they get hospitalized or whatever. And then because it might be Parks Canada's issue at the time. Let's say a word or somebody. Of employee of Parks Canada brings them to the community and then they need service that ends up being a municipal. Issue, I guess, opportunity to help somebody. So I, I guess, is there something in their agreement with Parks Canada on that? Are they getting some funding? I, I know that it really doesn't have anything to do with us, but is there an opportunity to advocate? I guess on, for, on their behalf as. People of governance in the community.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to councillor DeMora. This, the mandate letter that you see, the page one right after, that's the first sort of piece of paper. Or documentation that we've received from the Crisis Team Jasper Society. So almost all of your questions I cannot answer. Is there an opportunity to advocate? There may be. Certainly, again, council's purview. And I do want to make it clear that yes, let us say there was an incident in the park. As soon as those visitors slash residents arrive back in our community, we will receive them for sure. There's no question about that. It's, yeah, that's a really good point of clarity.
For me, it's just, again, it's one of those things if we're contributing to it, you know, you want to go out and help. Match some funding or whatever, because again, we're providing a service in, in a visitation area that. Not only that we market here, but Parks Canada as well. So there is activity that people from outside of our community go and participate in. And then, you know, we're falling back to, to services on, on our residents and, and, you know, taxpayers. The other question I have through you, Deputy Mayor, if I may, is just. Again, some clarity on the RCMP arm of victims of trauma or victims of crime. So some of these kind of interlay. Sometimes and where and how does in your mind and understanding though, where do those divisions get cut? For service.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to councillor DeMora. The VSU or Victim Services Unit, that structure is provincially funded, provincially organized and operated. And so again, the easiest example is you are in a car accident. Drunk driver hits you, charges are laid. You are now, that victim is now part of the Victim Services Unit. And that's support available to them. And again, that system is working. We haven't heard anything about any. Situation like that where the Victim Services Unit didn't show up. They've been there every time that that has been the case. And you know, I have had questions about domestic violence. Why would domestic violence not be a VSU thing? Because we know statistically, the majority of the partner who is assaulted does not press charges for fear. And so in that case, if we weren't there to support that person. What kind of community are we, right? So, but if charges were laid in a domestic violence incident, we would have no role to play. If charges were laid in a car accident, we would have no role to play. And, and we're not trying to take that role on. We're very happy that Soul Gen has funded that function.
And thank you very much. And that's, that's precisely where I was going. So I appreciate that clarification. And at this point, the province or the administrators of those services have not come to us for any. Extra funding at all. Okay, that's good to know.
Deputy Mayor, Wilson, I just have a question on that, on your conversation, there were council. So at the time. Criminal charge wasn't late. So then it would go to. Non. Even if they were charged later, so the prices team. Of Jasper would have to pick that up. Am I correct?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to councillor Callahan. So. That's a, that, that's a, let's follow this path. So there's an incident, domestic violence. The partner that was assaulted does not have the confidence, is too afraid to press charges on Friday. On Friday, we received that client at the outreach office. We would, we would absolutely receive that person and perhaps the kids. And we would maybe find them a combination. We would find them some sort of emotional supports. We would find them all sorts of things. And then the next day, they decide to press charges. At that point, in theory, and we've never had this not work out. At that point, they would enter the VSU system at that point. But what do we do on the Friday is, is the key support. So let's say that happens on Saturday. Saturday, the Crisis Team Jasper Society, they're either volunteer advocates or staff advocate would answer that phone. Referred by perhaps the hospital or referred by the RCMP. And they would answer that phone and they have absolutely in the past met that need. And by their stated mandate. It, they find it very easy to see that that's a trauma induced, they like to use the word cascading event. And so they would have no problem, as, as far as we can tell, they would have no problem supporting that person. The incident where perhaps it's a long-term mental abuse. And finally, the spouse gathers the kids and arrives. Is that a traumatic incident? It's happened over the last six months or six years. It's, it's, that's where we get into a bakery. What we are saying at outreach, we would one hundred percent receive that person and begin to support them. What we're asking for in this definition of crisis is that after hours, so would the Crisis Team Jasper society.
So given, yeah, I, I just want to pick up on something Director Reed said that, you know, that, that gap in that, that last circumstance and after hours is, I think, really the. A, a really key part here. And if council said, and we understood that that was, that, that council, you know, that. We had been able to identify that that was the gap previously. If we had more work to do to illustrate that, then certainly could. But if that, if council agrees that that's an important gap to be filled. And, you know, VSU with the, you know, case number thing doesn't fill that gap. Costs is only open certain hours and people have needs outside those hours. One way of addressing that need after hours, support for people that are not victims of crime, but need that assistance. We could easily come to council and say, we can put this into overtime. Internal, we can work out an overtime system with our internal staff who already do this kind of support during certain hours. Or. And what's in front of you today is we can provide that funding to an outside group and they can provide that service during those hours. But we all need to be under the same understanding about what the scope of that service is. And that's, that's what the F one oh four is intended to do is to define the scope. So we're under shared understanding because. I think. Not everyone defines crisis the same. You know, and, and so we want to make sure that it's explicit that, hey, there's, this is the type of crisis we need. Here's when we need that support and do you think you can meet that? That need. And if they said, no, we don't want to, can't, or whatever, we can consider that, bring that information to council. And we could also say, what are alternate ways of addressing that? That slice of the. That section of, of crisis adequately. And, you know, this is one approach using external party to do it. We could just as easily reallocate that funding. To internal resources and change the way we schedule people and do overtime. We could probably meet it in the same, you know, meet that same gap that exists in the community.
Councillor Waxer.
If you just wanted to ask for one point of clarification, I understood. I think I understood you to say that the Crisis Team Jasper at the moment is providing. The services that you described, but in, and but you're asking. For clarification, if it's ongoing, is, is that correct?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to councillor Waxer. Yes, and. So the services that. So funding for crisis response, we have. Not had any cases where Crisis Team Jasper Society said, no, they have agreed. That in all the cases we've given them, that they meet their definition of traumatic. The and part is, it is very time intensive to get that approval, quote unquote. And it comes with the very vague kind of. This time I can see it, but maybe not next time. And so it's very difficult to be efficient and work in that type of system. And. That's part of what we're trying to address here. Is the clarity of who would receive service, what the line is, what the mandate actually means. And the clarity of how that service is accessed. Is it straightforward and efficient? Or will we be, you know, required to go through? Quite a bit of administrative time to create the solutions for the people we see presenting. So councillor Melnick, sorry, let me fit you in there.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and through you to. Director Reed. The, the topic you just talked about that, that. In possibility of, of not having clarity of who is responsible for what, does this document? Clarify that enough in your. Relationship that you have with the different organizations to be able to move forward for a year.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to councillor Melnick. Yes, I will say that the, the tweaking that has been offered today will help with that clarity. But yes, we, we believe operationally this would meet our needs for sure.
And just to follow up on that, I noticed you have quarterly meetings scheduled and is there an intention or if things were going off the rails? Prior to an annual report in November, would you bring any concerns to council after those quarterly meetings?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to councillor Melnick. The intention here is that, again, we are collaborating to provide the adequate service for twenty-four seven around our community. So yes, and I'll give you the example, let's say that the twelve five was eaten up in three months. Based on historic data, we don't believe that would be the case. We believe we only need perhaps. We, we have accessed in the past six or seven thousand dollars of direct funding. And so, but let's say it did, let's say the demand got to be so large. Then the Crisis Team Jasper Society in, in collaboration with community development would absolutely bring. That forward to the funder to say, this didn't work or this isn't adequate. It did work, in fact, is, is what he said, right? And so, yes, that's exactly what we would do. And of course, council could. You know, one of the things we are dealing with here is that we've never worked with this organization before. As I said. That piece of paper that's attached here, that's the first thing in writing we've received, other than a request for funding. The meeting I had on Monday is the first time I've met with any board members. And so we are at the beginning of our relationship journey. Absolutely, council could say, well, since it's the beginning of the relationship journey, you want to hear the report every four months. Every three months. I will tell you that this will be one of the things that's in my director's report every time. It already is, it will continue to be. So you will know how this is going, I guarantee that. But you could also make it explicitly clear, you want to see a presentation every quarter, if that's what you wish for. What we've tried to do here is admit that it's a partnership. So we're going to meet quarterly. We're going to say, hey, how's this going? And what do we need to do to modify, adapt, change, improve? And let's do that together. We hadn't planned on presenting that to council every time. We had planned on those reports, however, going to their board. Ensuring that this information is shared equitably across their board. But we could absolutely add in whatever council would wish to see reported.
Thank you for that.
Councillor Hall and then Mayor.
Sorry, my microphone's dead. I must be talking a lot today. Up until this point, like this day right now. The Crisis Team Jasper Society has had twenty-four hour, seven day a week responses that. Or, or even under the Community Team Society, but there's been, since victim services. Say folded but changed, there's been twenty-four hour, a day, seven day a week crisis response in Jasper.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to councillor Hall. As far as we know, yes, the, the referral line. We are told has always been manned and whenever we've called it, it's always been answered. So you know, that gives us a lot of confidence, even trying to enter into a partnership agreement. It's, it's not as though we don't have any data. We do, this has been somewhat fully effective. It's it's not as though we don't have any data, we do, the this has been uh somewhat uh fully effective. I said somewhat, I should have said full.
So just based on that, you're commensurably about not knowing if the next one will be answered like that maybe. Because it's been done for two years, I feel confident that this is still gonna continue, is that your feeling as well?
Uh I'm. Uh Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Hall, I'll be clear. We haven't had any client turned away. However, we have had administrative um. Onerous efforts to ensure that those clients do get served. And we are told that it may not be in the future. And the may not be in the future part is very hard to provide a service to the community with. And and that is absolutely why we've asked for clarity. Are you going to meet this client every time?
If I if I can just continue, and you've been told that from the Crisis Team Jasper Society, that there may not be. Like that's where you're, that that that's them telling you this, this is why we're here. Coming coming up with this agreement, is that right?
Uh Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Hall, yes, in the times that we have called the number to ask for support. We have been told that, and on Monday, I was told that again.
So hypothetically, if they decide that this isn't what, this is not the F one oh four they want, we, the money doesn't go to them. Could you with twelve thousand five hundred have a phone man twenty four hours? Or I guess it would be out of work hours because you already have staff that work the eight to four, but could. Would Outreach Services be able to pick up? That need and fill that gap?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Hall, uh it's certainly possible. Uh I have not spent any staff time developing a system such as that. And so I cannot say with any certainty what that might cost, uh what it what it might look like. Uh but it is absolutely a a possibility for us, absolutely. We would know how to set that up pretty quickly and uh and and fund it pretty quickly, like explain it pretty quickly.
Just follow up to, just to be clear, I'm I'm extremely proud of our community and how we address crisis needs. Um and I'm not at all against any of this, I'm just asking questions because I want to make sure that um. You know, I I think based from what came at budget, it's it just seems a bit different and I I wonder what. The appetite around the table would be just to hold off on this until we, you said they're coming in in February, the Crisis Team Jasper. Society is coming, I just wonder what the appetite is, just to hold off until we have a chance to speak with their board, because I ha- I haven't spoken with their board, so it might be. But it just might make a bit of sense to me, I'm I'm just not sure what the consensus around the table is or what other counselors think.
You, well, I'm comfortable doing that, but uh I pass it off to Mayor Ireland first.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, um well, speaking first to that suggestion. I don't have a difficulty. Directing administration now to enter into an F one oh four agreement. But that's predicated on the crisis team agree. I mean, if they don't agree, they can come and talk to us, but in the meantime, why would we wait um? If if they are real, right, I think. We could say, go ahead, but it takes two to to sign an ordinance. Um they could always come back and I would welcome them to do that, if there's a requirement to change terms. My question, um well firstly, a a brief. Observation and something potentially to be discussed, I think. Crisis team primarily, and that is that it interplay with provincial victim services. It seems. Odd to me that um a charge would be required. To have victim services at provincial level respond. There are lots of instances where a crime is committed and nobody is ever charged. So if a visitor comes back to a trailhead and finds their vehicle to have been stolen. It might remain an unsolved crime, but it's still a crime, and I would think that victim services would respond rather than the crisis team. So it it's worth fleshing that out, but I don't have the details available of how. How victim services determines whether or not a crime has been committed so that they respond. Anyway, I you don't need to answer, I mean, if if you can, you can.
Uh Deputy Mayor Wilson through to your worship, I would only add, a again, perhaps my shorthand. Um if there is a police file. So in the stolen car, the crime has definitely occurred, uh the car is not there, there would likely be a police file. So when that happens, that unlocks the V S U system. Uh to my understanding, it's it's. Again, just the clients that we have seen, that's not the typical client. So I was, you know, trying to explain the reality of what the kind of clients we've been dealing with are.
So a reported crime, crime rather than. Then we go out to stop the data, that the rise of unreported crime. All right, leaving that aside, I I do have some questions about the second F one oh four. Because I I'm struggling to see a request anywhere. For twenty five thousand dollars for the recruitment and advocacy, or the recruitment of advocates, so. Um I recognize that in twenty twenty two. Council allocated twelve and a half thousand dollars to the community team for that purpose, and that was never spent. So that is coming back and that's eligible to go for the same purpose, that's fine. November first, we received the request for the annual funding, which is the twelve and a half thousand dollar F one oh four. And there was a Schedule C. To that, in our agenda, it's called Schedule C. And it appears to me to relate to the twenty twenty two amount, the twelve and a half thousand dollars. There was an allocation in twenty twenty three for another twelve and a half thousand dollars that continues to sit there, it's unexpended. In twenty twenty three. But I don't recall that having been allocated for anything other than general support or. Crisis response, not necessarily for recruiting advocates. And I I don't mind dealing with it, but I. I I cannot follow a request for twenty five thousand dollars. To the F one oh four for twenty five thousand dollars. Is there a request from Crisis Team? For twenty five thousand dollars for recruiting and training advocates?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, at at my own risk, I'll jump in to say uh. This is administration's attempt at. Sort of squaring a circle, um the organization um. Felt that the money from previous years was dedicated for specific use and that it should have gone to them. I think there's been some discussion about that in the community, and this is administration's attempt to say, okay, fair enough. It sounds like that money has been unallocated and or is coming back to the municipality. Um as administration, we don't see any reason that it shouldn't go out into the community, and in fact, council has said. Let J C T S keep the money, at least one of these cases, um but it sounds like that that's coming back. Administration's recommendation would be that if council is uh. Inclined to reallocate those funds from previous years to a group, we should say what it's for. Rather than just, here you go, here's the money. Because something was supposed to happen, so so that's what the intent, I think, of that one was to say, okay, yes, there's this, these past sums of money. Administration, you know, has been hearing council's direction that that should continue to be out for use in the community, not reclaim. Because that's another option is, any money that came back to the municipality could just go back to municipal budget. And, you know, be sort of into the municipal surplus. Um but the, it sounds like the intention from council is to put it to use in the community, to this organization. And administration is suggesting that, okay, what basis would we do that, or what would the terms be? And we've recommended some terms here, that that could be done. The effect is that the money from previous years that is coming back to the municipality is now on to this organization. But we've at least put some guidance around, why did we give you that?
Well, thank you for that, my concern is that. If they haven't asked for twenty five thousand for that specific purpose, and yet reallocate twenty five thousand for that specific purpose. What if they only need fifteen, they 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 came and asked for twelve and a half, um and maybe that's five. We're sitting on a twenty five thousand and I don't mind at all. Reallocating it to the crisis team. But I. I don't see a necessity to put it all to a specific objective. Um of recruiting and training advocates, if it's not all needed, if it's needed for. General funds, you know, to do for general funds, so they can provide the response that's. That's predicated in the other, that's all I'm saying, so I would like to know from Crisis Team. What they actually desire in terms of funding for recruiting and training advocates?
Uh Deputy Mayor Wilson through to uh Mayor Ireland, uh that's a great question. That is one of the things that I've been asking for for months. Uh absolutely have not received that clarity, I did have a verbal request for all of that money. And I I explained that money was being held for this purpose. Your point about, uh well, was the twelve five from twenty twenty three actually meant to be operational funding? The Jasper Community Team Society's uh sort of open and transparent books indicate that they did not need that operational funding, which is why they never asked for it. They have the uh uh collected fundraising. Uh the Jasper Community Team Society has been administering that, waiting for this system to be created. The system is still not yet created. The Jasper Community Team Society has said, if Crisis Team Jasper Society wants this work, it's theirs. And so the Jasper Community Team Society has said. Here is that money we were holding, and they are giving that back to the Crisis Team Jasper Society. That there's still uh tens of thousands of dollars in that fund. So the Jasper Community Team Society did not see a need to take that twelve five and add it to a savings account. When it was meant to be for a purpose and uh. C E O given is right, this is an attempt to give the Crisis Team Jasper Society what they would need. In the F one oh four proposed agreement, draft agreement, we say. When you show us the budget, when you show us the need, then the money would be there for you. We we, I believe, at council's request, through policy F one oh four, said we weren't going to be giving out money. With no strings attached, we would ask for and wait for budgets, financial uh. The met uh papers of incorporation, the name change, all of the sort of things you see uh at the beginning, right? Do they have the insurance listing us as an additional insured? If we're going to partner with them, that's a reasonable request. Um and so when we are asking for those things. The money isn't just the line, the money is when we have seen these documents. It would release that funding to support your project. And so the budget is a key element of, you're right, they might say they don't need all twenty five thousand. What I've been told verbally is they want that money, and so I've tried to accommodate partnering with them to provide that money for what they've explicitly asked.
Uh I'm going to Counselor DeBod and then Counselor.
So I'm not going to use, I I just want people to be clear on this. The things that I'm going to talk about are coming from a place of trying to have an attitude of healthy skepticism. Again, right, so if we were working with other agencies in the community and they didn't use the money that. Where they specifically asked for it. In particular time, then we went through a rough budget and there's still some criticism out there, you know, that increase. Um if that money isn't getting used by other groups, like I I think some of the the more proactive approach would be, well, let's just put that back in the reserves. And maybe use that to help, you know, relieve some of the DAX increases for next year, because they're kind of. Right, so um that's kind of where I'm at from like a conservative point of view. Um second of all, um you know, this is a one time only thing, twenty five thousand dollars. Uh you know, but what happens if there's turnover, if people leave, and then, you know, there's going to be some more training and recruitment to take place, we set a precedent, they don't have money to support that. And then it's like, oh, well, we need to get a computer and all this other stuff and and, you know, what are the specifics behind all that? So I'm just just putting those out there for thought. So just because it's tax dollars and that segues into my next train of thought. Here we're at committee of the whole, and the recommendation is to direct administration to enter to these funding agreements, and key word there is funding. I don't like making decisions at this table, I guess, when we're meeting as committee to make financial decisions or direct. Uh you know, decisions that are going to be impactful to, you know, our finances, and I think that should be. More worded to uh that committee um recommend to council. To direct or whatever it is, that would have gotten in a little bit of trouble before in my mind, and I think that would have alleviated uh some ambiguity. And. Having said that, I think that's an important thing to to think about when talking about a procedure bylaw, so things can be a little bit more cut and dry. Because right now I don't feel that they are, and I think this puts us in a difficult situation. So going back to what Counselor Hall said about delaying the process, I think even taking that next step. Will help us get some more uh feedback from the society itself, uh or the crisis team, and then um. We'll have a better opportunity to make a a more sound decision, thank you.
Uh before you go ahead, Counselor Keller, I think C E O wants to. Yeah, just on just on that process point, I appreciate what Counselor DeBod is saying. Um from administration's perspective, we're not actually asking for any financial decisions, they've actually been previously made. So that the twelve five in twenty twenty four dollars was discussed and debated and voted on during the budget discussion and integrated budget. And at that time, ca- council said, and do an F one four. So so the financial, should there, shouldn't there be money in twenty twenty four? For this organization has already been decided, debated, you know, sort of in a appropriate form. The second portion of the twelve five from uh each of two previous years um. It may be fair to say, okay, well, in that case, those ones are actually council making new financial decisions. Uh and maybe that's more of a council, council can decide that, but. Administration, I think, was operating under the premise that these are all previously made financial decisions where we've received a direction that money. Dollar amounts should be dedicated to a purpose, and all we were bringing forward was, okay, so now what is the? What are the, what is the scope of work that we're defining with that organization for what the money will be used for, not whether there is or isn't money? And uh certainly in those two previous years, council may choose to vary their decision, you know, there was a decision point before. Uh where a group came forward and said, actually, we didn't use this twelve five, here you go. And council said, actually, if you can continue to use it, you know, didn't need it for that purpose, just keep it and put it in this other fund. Council could choose to vary that decision against several of the mission.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, um I just, that I had this right. When we made a decision going forward this year, we didn't require our outside groups to all have nonprofit status. And we said, going, so I would hate to that this money was being held up. Because they didn't have their corporation in place, because uh if they've been working for two years. I don't think it should be held up on that.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, so, you know, for clarity, um. Our understanding, you know, the again, the understanding administration was operating under was that that discussion about. Uh providing financials was at budget for all of the different groups that had requested. And council said, no, you know what, on second thought, we don't need to do that, I think, motion was voted down. Um and so that impact was not on all of the different groups that applied for funding and were granted funding uh in the twenty twenty four budget. This group specifically. Council said, develop an F one oh four and come back to council for review. Our advice to you as administration is, a group should be able to produce these things. And we would put that expectation in the F one oh four, that they should be able to produce a budget, information of the board of directors, you know, all those sort of basic things. Um and so I think the question at count at the budget session, should we apply this every, it has asked? And the answer was no, we're in the process of developing this agreement, and our advice to you is that you should ask.
And if I may, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Keller, I mean, we do require this of several of our funded groups. This is not a surprise to uh our large funded groups.
Counselor DeBod?
And I I just don't, I don't want to get into debate with administration, I just, for me as a counselor. You know, again, like there's some specifics on after hours, and if the one, if the twelve five hundred, that specific amount is going to be used just. For the after hours response um. You know, I I I don't know if I was completely clear on that, and and maybe, you know, I was speaking out of out of turn on that, but then the recommendation. Uh says as well as development and in implementation, so if we're making a decision. If we're making a decision here and when soup and there's actually a change or a different or new request, I still think that should go to council. Regardless. You know, there are financial decisions to be made here, and I think a little bit more clarity is needed, because even in the F. The, the F one oh four funding, I'm not sure if, if that twelve five is specific to. Specific hours, is that, am I wrong in reading that or? Because there's one thing in the recommendation and then there's one thing in, in the F.
As I may not be there. So, so the motion for the twelve five in twenty twenty four, council, you know, at budget. There's a motion that's contained in the report, be assigned to the Crisis Team Jasper Society in twenty twenty four, subject to. The development of F one oh four agreement to be reviewed by council. So, so again, in terms of should there be money or not, that decision has been clearly made. And so if council wanted to deal with the F one oh four separately, that might be reasonable. Council want to have some more discussion debate about. The reallocation of previously, you know, the twenty five thousand, that might be separate, but this one pretty clearly. Council said, there will be money, it will be for this group. Administration, come and tell us what the terms of that arrangement should look like too. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I wonder if. In the recommendation recommended motion, this is. Kind of back to what Mayor Ireland was speaking to, like we should move forward with this, but they still have to fund, you know, they don't have to take it. Could we change the last word? As presented to as collaborated, like is that a way to? We want to enter, I, I want to fund the Crisis Team Jasper Society, like I, I absolutely do, and I feel that council probably does too. But I want. The F one oh four agreement to be mutually. Agreed upon or collaborated or, and if they're coming to us in February, that might give enough time to. Meet with them again, collaborate on this F one oh four and, and come back when they, when they come back, like I, I can see we can move forward at this. Absolutely, because they certainly don't have to accept it. But I, I want them to, I want to, this to come. I would love to fund this, this society, it could, is that, we changed that last word to collaborate or is it just make things too?
Then why not wait to collaborate? Like, let's wait till the February thirteenth, let's hear from them, there's been some doubt cast, but like throughout the last few months. There was even doubt cast today when Mr. Reid suggested that you'd never worked with this group, but their, their, their letter suggests that. They've had. Volunteers on the board for twenty years, and we have worked with this group, and the group has been. Operating since nineteen ninety five, so you know, I, I just wanna make sure that they're at the table, I wanna have the, the. Transparency, I wanna have the conversation with them because we have struggled over the last. Months and. Unfortunately, I, I don't feel it's all the crisis team, I don't feel it's all administration, but there is a challenge there and. Maybe it's time to get everybody at the table and we have to be the moderator, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, administration would be happy for that support and involvement of council. But I don't think it's in terms of moderation, it is in terms of setting your expectation. And so if council expects to meet with the board. So you can collaborate with them and understand, you know, what it is that they see their mandate as, so that you can ensure that you provide that guidance to us. I think that that's totally fair, and we would, I think, be very supportive of that. If it is. If the idea of directing administration, we all, you know, directing administration to collaborate, well, we, we. We can't make somebody else collaborate, we can offer suggestions, but at, at some point, council is the funder. And so if these. If this scope of work that's spelled out in the F one oh fours is right. Or you want to hear whether it's right or not from a different source other than administration. That's your prerogative. And so if it was a table and direct administration organize a meeting of council and the board. That's, you know, or table until the organization can make a presentation to council with respect to. Totally, you know, totally fine above board, and as administration, we've done this work to give you this advice. And if you need additional inputs before making a decision, totally fair. Right, but you know. I think in the end it is council determining what you're comfortable with in terms of defining that scope of work before releasing the funds. Administration has recommended to you. And it sounds like you want additional inputs. You know, totally fine, but it sounds like you need to organize that discussion with the organization.
And yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, I do, you know, this group has been operating for two years without this funding. So they might be able to hold on for another couple of weeks before they can come present to us at council and. And tell what you've been doing and show us all the things and. And ask for the money.
I'm sorry to be a stick in the mud, I just, I'm like, I'm not entirely clear here and, and I'm sorry if I miss things or if I what, it's my. Attention span or whatever it is. So we have a recommendation from administration, we asked administration to come back and we have an F one oh four agreement. Did this, did the Jasper. The, the crisis team and or, you know, we've got the, the agreement here, the crisis team Jasper Society. In the recommendation, it says after hours and. It specifically says after our support in, in the financial portion of it, but then the F one oh four. Specifically states Monday to Friday, nine to four. So this is where I'm kind of like confused. And it's just, it's not a matter of. Semantics here, it's like, what did they ask for and what do we wanna give it for? And to me, if it's just for general. Operations, then let's specify that. And stop talking about after hours and nine to five, I mean, Friday, nine to four, it's Friday. Because if there's a change there, then again, you know, if, if it's one thing that we voted on at budget time under a certain pretext, and if there is a change to that, I just. For clarity, I just wanna be there because I'm, I'm a little foggy, and if I apologize if I'm the only one.
Deputy Mayor Wilson for Council, I don't think you're foggy, I think the request at budget time, which is contained in the package, was very broad. Was, was very, very broad, you know. And I'm, and I'm summarizing, I probably not discuss, but you know. Continue to do what we've been doing and recruit some additional people to supplement that effort. Pretty broad, no, and so administration is tempting to say, okay. Specifically, what do we mean by what you've been doing? And, and we put that down on paper. If the group has a different view, they can certainly share that with the council, but at some level, it does be more specific than. Respond to crises, what kind of crises, you know, we've already talked about, there needs to be a bit more definition. So, and there also was no written request submitted to the municipality for the twenty five thousand dollars. So it wouldn't be unreasonable for council to say, excuse us, group. What are you planning on using twenty five thousand dollars for? Because we haven't previously received any written documentation requesting it. We certainly. From administration, I think they've had that verbally shared that there's an expectation that those dollars. Are rightfully allocated to this organization. I'm not sure the council has ever had the benefit of hearing that argument. And you might reasonably ask them to make it to you in public. Like you would for anybody else that's requesting funding.
I get that, and, and I thank you very much for, for clarifying that, so that's the first now. Second, the partnership funding agreement that's in front of us. We look at. What the agreement says and then we go down to the Jasper, that Crisis Team Jasper Society will. And then it's got one, two, and then when we get to number four. It says operate the crisis team response line number and then. Bunch of words, and then it says. Within the downside of Jasper, outside the hours of nine of, okay. All right, got.
I am prepared to make two motions if. If you think it's time. My first motion would be that. Committee authorize administration to enter into an F one oh four funding agreement. With the Crisis Team Jasper Society for After Hours Crisis Response. Substantially in the form presented and adjusted at committee of the whole. On January twenty third. Twenty twenty four. So the agreement's gonna change anyway because we made some adjustments, so it's not as presented. It's an authorization, but it's not a direction that this is all you get to do. But an authorization, if the other side is prepared to come to the table and sign that agreement. I'm good with, and if there is a problem, I'm sure it's gonna work its way back to this table that I. I don't think we should invite. Council to do administrative work, I think this can get resolved between administration and. The Crisis Team Jasper Society, and I certainly hope that it will. We've come, I think, a very long way. Council wanted to see something, a general outline, I think we've seen a general outline. I'm content on, on this one. As long as the other side, the Jasper, the Crisis Team Jasper Society is, is good with it. Then get it done. So I, I have heard as much as I think I need to hear. To authorize administration to get about its business of signing an agreement. And I, I will make a similar. Motion with respect to the other F one oh four, but I think it's best because there are some differences. Best to separate them now, so. That is my motion.
Thank you, Counselors, if anyone would like to speak to the motion.
Not to speak to it, but can you just repeat it one more time?
The committee authorized administration to enter into an F one oh four funding agreement with the Crisis Team Jasper Society. For After Hours Crisis Response substantially in the form presented and adjusted. At committee of the whole meeting held on January twenty third, twenty twenty four.
Suggested adjusted?
We made some suggestive wording changes for plans and. There was. There were a couple of others suggested changes that I think Mr. Reid. Accepted should be made, and he was looking at some wording changes. It doesn't change. There were some suggested changes, and I don't think they changed the intent. They just add some clarity, that's why I'm satisfied. We have a clear understanding of the intent. Some adjusted wording I can live with, it was all discussed. I just don't see a need for it to come back to council unnecessarily, although I recognize that it. It might if the. Crisis Team Jasper Society finds any of those provisions to be untenable. They won't sign and it'll be bad for us in any event.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, for Mayor Ireland, I wonder. If it would help council and the public's understanding to specify that this is for the. Twelve thousand five hundred approved in the twenty twenty four budget and previously proved, just because about saying. We have two F one oh fours here, again, I understand that you're gonna make this our option, but just distinguishing that this was the. Money previously approved.
I am happy that you have suggested how. I specifically reference the. After Hours Crisis Response F one oh four, which is only that, but. I acknowledge that this is with respect to the funding that was already approved in twenty twenty four budget.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you for all of the discussion, and I just for clarity. To his worship, in the first F one oh four and page twenty six of our agenda, there's a reference to twelve thousand five hundred dollars. In the motion that you made. And you haven't made the next motion. Which refers to the next. F one oh four on page thirty five. And that one has a thirty thousand or twenty five thousand dollar reference to it. So I take it we'll be changing the second F one oh four. Otherwise, we're authorizing, it looks like. More than. What we're originally talking about.
My intent, Counselor Melnick, is to separate. The two F one oh four documents and deal right now just with the. Twelve and a half thousand dollars for what I would call operational funding. The After Hours Crisis Response and leave the other one, which is funding for. Recruiting and training advocates to a separate motion entirely. That's the twenty five thousand dollar.
Okay, so we are, we're in fact talking about thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars between the two motions.
We would be if that's where we wind up on the twenty five thousand, right now, I, I just wanna talk about twelve and a half thousand dollars.
Gotcha, just wanna make sure I'm in the loop, sorry.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, if I may, I did title the second agreement, the supplementary funding agreement, just perhaps to state that for clarity. The first one is called the funding agreement, I can see now perhaps operations should be in that title and I believe men that. The second one I have titled supplementary funding agreement, so just for clarity.
Anything further? Motion? I may speak to, I'm gonna vote not a favor, like. We've got. Purchasing services from somebody, you know, let's call it like that, and it's twelve thousand five hundred and. But then we're going to say, oh, no, we want that, 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 and that for twelve thousand five hundred, and I just don't think that's right, I've been in. Receiving in the NAP court and I don't think that's fair, so it's, I don't feel like it's beneficial to. Pass this motion before speaking with the crisis team and, like, again, like, wait till. February thirteenth, but. It's your motion, Mayor Ireland, I'll let you close.
I, I have nothing to add, thank you.
I'll call the question, all in favor? There are two in favor, opposed, there, oh, sorry, Ralph is. Sorry, one, two, three, Ralph is opposed or in favor? Maybe turn your mic off. In favor or opposed?
I was in favor.
Okay, so there was three in favor, and then there were four opposed. That motion is defeated. Mayor Ireland, a second motion here.
Inviting me to step into another defeat, thank you for that. I will make a similar motion with respect to. The other recommendation, and that would be that. Can committee authorize administration to enter into an F? One oh four funding agreement with the Crisis Team Jasper Society. For the development and implementation of a crisis team advocate recruitment and. Training program substantially in the form presented at committee of the whole meeting on January twenty third, twenty twenty. For any amount of twenty five thousand dollars. And to get to speak to that. That simply authorizes administration to sign, they can only sign if there is a willing party on the other side. Again, recognizing that. We don't have a specific request for twenty five thousand dollars, which is. A concern, but those funds have been previously allocated. In twenty twenty two, specifically for this purpose. In twenty twenty three. For a different purpose for general operating funds but never used. Implicit in the motion is, I think, a reallocation. Which I'm comfortable with, I understand that not all counselors, maybe. But again. I think at some point, administration, crisis team. Have to be able to negotiate contracts and whether. This is the end result or not, it authorizes. From our side, administration to enter into something that looks like what we've seen, and again. There is resistance on the other side of twenty five thousand dollars is not the right amount. Then I invite the crisis team to address that. We are told that they have made a verbal request for all that. We haven't seen that request, but if that's what they want and that's how they intend to spend it. I'm fine with that, so that is the nature and the intent of. Of my motion, and so to clarify for Counselor Melnick, yes. Twenty five thousand dollars, all of which has previously been allocated in either the twenty twenty two or the twenty twenty three. Budget and remains unspent at this time.
Sorry, councillor, may I speak first? I'm comfortable in that, or sorry, I'm only uncomfortable with that because I've heard otherwise, and I don't want to like speak to rumors, but I've been, I've heard that some of that money has been spent over the last couple of years. So I just want to make sure that that money is not, I think your, your motion is restricted it into where that money gets spent? Is it just for the improvement? It is okay. So I'm not comfortable in, I'd like to speak to the group before they get to, or before we make that motion, but so voting non-favorit, but councillor, what?
Yeah, just, you know, during budget time, I was against some decisions that were made. I mean, I know I support council and, and, you know, and the ones that move forward, even though I was against, but you know, on the same premise. When we're in tougher times financially, I'm not saying that, you know, we're we're in dire straits here, but we've heard a lot from the community, and I've heard the term using it again, the council is torn deaf sometimes when it comes down to, you know, our finances and I'm not saying that that's coming from everyone, but you know, sometimes we have to say no. And if it was like somebody that represented another group, I don't want, I'm just using this as specific, not as a specific, but let's say volleyball or something else where they don't use the money. And, you know, it's then they say, well, we want to use it for other things because it didn't, you didn't need it for that or whatever. It's, there's something that's a verbal request that we don't have in writing right now. I think it's responsible to, to put that back in reserves and then just have future discussions with it instead of making decisions here today. I don't think it's responsible right now. So I'm basing that on the premise of that we, we need to, we've got some tighter times coming up. And I think sometimes it's just, even though it's $25,000, we do that four times and, you know, we're going to save a percent here and there. So it's a way I'm kind of, and you know, I'm all for this group and for what they do for the community, but I don't think we're setting ourselves up for success financially, specifically procedurally.
Councillor, could be?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I recognize similar to you. I believe this during when the community outreach or community not cost team society, when they brought money back, I remember asking a question like that, has the money been used for crisis? I got told crisis did take place, but the money hadn't been given during those conversations. So I don't think we should have lost the money to anything in this. I've been trying to wait to discuss it with the Crisis Team because I think if they did spend, we say, $6,000 that year that they had expected the $12,500 from us, and they took $6,000 and spent it, that should go back to that part. So I think we should wait until or have something in writing.
Councillor Hall?
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'm going to vote against this motion. I'm absolutely happy to provide this grant to the Crisis Team Society, but, or Crisis Team Jasper Society. But if I understand correctly from administration, they haven't asked for this money yet.
Deputy Mayor Wilson through the council hall. So you can see the letter of them asking for $12,500. They have not asked for all $25,000. They have just made it clear to me that they believe that's their so I created this solution in hopes that there would be a deliverable for a contract that, that as you mentioned, Deputy Mayor Wilson, we are trying to buy service. If again, with all of the caveats in here, where is your budget? Where is your societal status? Where is all the things that we have yet to see? They might only need $19,000. They might only need $5,000. But without seeing a budget and a project plan, it's tough for me to tell you whether or not I think it's good value for money. Do I think our community could benefit from a robust system of recruiting and training volunteer advocates for this very need? Yes. Do I think that it would be wonderful if the Crisis Team Jasper Society was the service provider for such a system? Yes. That's why you see this here. I I actually don't know if I answered your question. That
wasn't my question.
Right.
If I can just ask a question to Mayor Ireland about the motion in it, does it specifically say volunteer advocates in your motion?
It says Advocate Recruitment and Training Program. Doesn't say volunteers, but that's who they intend to recruit and train is my understanding.
If I can just ask a bit more clarification on your motion because I might be changing my mind. Your motion, the intent is that they just need to come to us, show that they've done this for the past two years, and we'll enter into agreement. Is that what you your intent? I'm sorry.
The intent of the motion is to authorize administration enter into such an agreement with the Crisis Team Jasper Society based on that list of requirements, which includes a budget and so forth. If the Crisis Team needs or believes they need $25,000 for that purpose, and again, this is a separate standalone F-104 for this particular purpose, that is recruiting and training advocates. If that's what they need, I agree with Director Reed. I think that is a critical component to allowing this service to operate in our community. And if that's seriously what they want, then I choose to make a motion to authorize our administration to enter into that agreement with if through the process of developing their budget that has to be part of the agreement, they find that they only need $19,000, let them come back and tell us that and say, we would like the other $6,000 to be reallocated to general funding. And I I would be receptive to that. But I just don't see a real advantage in holding up the system. We can authorize our administration to keep working with the Crisis Team Jasper Society to make some progress, which is for the benefit of the community. And as I said earlier, all these funds have already been allocated in past budgets. The initial $12,500 in the 2022 budget was for recruiting and training volunteer advocates, and it was not spent for, and the community team society said, we didn't spend it on that. We'd like to keep it now. I think they've determined that it's just easier to give it back. So that money is going to flow back to us. The other $12,500 of operational funding for 2023 was never accessed. It sits there. If that can be reallocated for a necessary advocacy recruitment and training program in 2024, I'm all for it. I think everybody agrees that this is a needed service in our community. The Crisis Team Jasper Society is prepared to offer it. So I would authorize by this motion, our administration enter into that agreement, subject, of course, to concurrence with the Crisis Team. If they don't agree that this is the right contract, then they won't sign it. And they'll come back and make a different request and the money's still since.
Councillor, come on.
I've already spoken to this, so I appreciate the opportunity. And this, I guess, is just just one more point of I, I, I think I might make a friendly amendment here and it could be accepted or not. But I guess we can vote on that. Going back to the previous motion that got defeated. That's just because it got defeated here. We can still bring it up at council in council chambers as council directing administration. And so that's why I want to make reference to this because I would like to direct this to council because we're changing that money allocation, I believe. And I think that that has a a different kind of angle, and I'm still not comfortable procedurally. Like I just, I just don't like it. So I would say that, you know, to enhance, in my mind, the mayor's motion is that instead of committee directing administrations, that committee recommend that council direct administration. That would be my friendly amendment.
I'm not the chair, so I don't get to rule. I think it does change the nature of the motion, so it doesn't qualify as friendly amendment, but that doesn't mean that it can't but or just as an amendment, just amend the motion, and we can vote on that in council's favor. That's fine, but a friendly amendment enhances and clarifies the motion, but it doesn't change it. This suggested amendment changes the nature of the motion.
I will not proceed with that. It's drawn up.
Okay, everybody understands the question. There's nothing further. I'll call the question. All in favor? There is only one opposed. Then motion carries. Okay. Thank you for that, everybody. Where are we at? It's three o'clock. What time do we need a motion to extend? 3:15? No, 3:00.
Oh, yeah. Whatever the amount of the four hours, we'll let, we'll let Mr. Bean.
Oh, sorry, I should have consulted to councillor Melnick. He would have.
He's got the calculation.
So prior to us breaking, we were at two hours and 15 minutes. So now we're at three hours and 45 minutes. So I guess technically we would be just about at four hours as I looked at the first 1.5 hours and 45 minutes, and now we've been at it for another 1.5. So we do need that motion. And so I would make that motion to extend the meeting beyond four hours.
Thank you for that. Councillor Melnick, all in favor? Are none opposed? And what carries? We are moving on to, well, let's take a quick break, actually. Quick break. Get up. We'll be back at 3:10. Okay, welcome back. We're moving on about halfway through the agenda. We're on the 7.4 childcare advocacy. Mr. Given, would you like to introduce? Oh. Mr. Reed, this room.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson and council. So, oh my goodness. I have gone to the wrong place. Please excuse my delay. Something has happened strangely to my computer. There we go. Nope, it's still not working.
I was going to say to fill in some time there, I was going to ask councillor Melnick if he was around when they had to escort people out of town with a horse and gun. Can you imagine what it would cost of today's money if the victim services had to deal with that? Anyway.
Deputy Mayor Wilson and council, thank you for understanding of my computer freezing, but everything is working perfectly now. So the item you see before you is childcare advocacy. And the recommendation is that committee recommend council approve the early learning and childcare bilateral agreement advocacy approach as presented. Alternatives are that committee direct administration to revise the approach. And that committee receive this, another alternative is that committee receive this report for information, take no further action. So the background is that Canada-Alberta learning, early learning and childcare agreement signed in November 2021 commits $3.8 billion to early learning and childcare in Alberta with the goal of making childcare costs an average of $10 a day by 2026. This investment has been reshaping the landscape of early learning and care and creating opportunities for municipalities to address local childcare gaps. On September 12, 2023, committee put forward the following motion, that committee recommend council write a letter to the provincial government requesting a current timeline on the implementation of the federal provincial early learning and childcare bilateral agreements. On October 10, committee amended the previous motion and made the following one. That committee referred to the matter of advocacy on the bilateral agreement for childcare to a future committee on a whole meeting. On November 27, 2023, myself and childcare services manager Lisa Daniel met with assistant deputy ministers Joni Brodyak and Tennis Librick to discuss the municipal childcare, to discuss municipal childcare and the upcoming changes to the affordability grant. The discussion in 2022, the Alberta government began lowering the fees for families as part of its effort to make childcare more affordable. The amount that families save each month varies depending on the fees each childcare provider charges. In Jasper, families pay an average of $35 to $39 a day before the Alberta childcare subsidy is applied. If families qualify for full subsidy, which is $266 a month, that lowers the daily rate to $25 to $27 per day. During the previous discussions about ELCC bilateral agreement, childcare services manager Lisa Daniel has mentioned that if the provincial funding model stays the same, Jasper may never achieve $10 a day. Daycares are fees are higher than other communities. In December 2023, the government of Alberta announced new affordability grant rates for families enrolled at full time. The rates for families enrolled 50 hours or less did not change. The amount that families save each month varies depending on the fees each childcare provider charges. $883 for children zero to 18, $709 for 19 to three years, and $626 for children three to five years of age. This equals about $27 to $33 a day before subsidy and after subsidies applies, fees could be as low as $15 to $21 per day. With the updates to the Alberta affordability grant, to the affordability grant, the province also introduced a new parent paid minimum amount. This means that before subsidy, a parent's invoice must be at least $217.50 for those children enrolled full-time and 100 for those ruled part-time. The biggest limiting factors to increasing childcare capacity and affordability in Jasper are lack of physical space, the higher than average operating costs in our unique context. And in order to address this, administration recommends the following approaches to advocacy. The council write the Minister of Children and Family Services to request the Alberta government appoint a municipal childcare representative to the ELCC advisory committee. And we want, we suggest that because having a representative that understands municipally delivered childcare would help ensure that the Jasper's perspective informs future provincials' decision-making. That council write the Minister of Children and Family Services, West Yellowhead MLA and Yellowhead MP, to request the provincial and federal governments provide capital funding to support the creation of new physical spaces for childcare. And the council support submitting a request for decision to the Alberta municipality's Spring Municipal Leaders Caucus, calling on the government of Alberta to establish a capital grant program to support the creation of new physical spaces for childcare. Since 2018, British Columbia has offered the Childcare BC New Spaces Fund to help support the creation of new physical spaces for childcare. And under that program, BC will pay up to 100% of eligible project costs towards items such as land purchase, construction, site development, or renovations. In 2022, the BC funding for the program was at $292 million, about $84 million from provincial funds and the rest from the federal funding under the Canada-wide ELCC program. And finally, collaborate with other municipal childcare providers in our region in any advocacy efforts. There are, of course, as we have reviewed many times, several strategic priority items that are relevant to this community health, relationships, organizational excellence, and advocacy. And inclusion considerations, again, accessible, inclusive, early learning and childcare is one way that we serve our diverse community and meet the goals stated in the EDNI policy. The financial, sorry, relevant legislation, as you see there, a few documents, financial, the recommendation can be supported within the approved 2024 operating budget. And I am open for any questions. And yeah, that's it.
Thank you for that, Director Reed. Councillors, questions?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. My question is just the first recommendation we write the minister, Minister Turton. Any rep, are we talking about, like, we specifically wanting a Jasper representative or do you mean any you're just looking, what we're looking for is any municipal in the province to be on this advisory committee?
Deputy Mayor Wilson through the council hall. You could request it be Jasper. However, you know, there are basically
request it be Jasper, however, uh, you know, there are basically a handful of programs being run through municipalities. We, uh, share a network, so, uh, manager Daniels is in contact with them, and she's online too, if there are any other questions, uh, that I can't answer. Um, but it, we would be satisfied from operational side, the administrative side, that it would be anyone from a municipal, uh, run and operated program, uh, council, you could be more strict or 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 specific, and say you want Jasper representative?
I have another question, if that's okay, um, this might be, uh, for Ms. Daniel, what in, what income qualifies that lowest rate, like the the best subsidy? The most subsidy?
Um, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Hall, um, subsidy changed, uh, back with when the affordability grant came in. So some, a household earning up to a hundred and seventy thousand can qualify for some form of subsidy. Usually to receive the two sixty-six, the, um, maximum household income is one nineteen nine nine nine.
Thank you through you Deputy Mayor Wilson to, uh, Ms. Daniels. I'm wondering if we anticipate there'll be another, uh, affordability grant, uh, addition i- in in twenty, at the end of twenty twenty-four, um, cause I see this one came out in December twenty twenty-three, that would get us down to the ten dollar a day. Uh, cause it looks like even with subsidy, we're all, we're the lowest before the Higgs fifteen.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Waxer. Uh, no, I don't see any other changes to the affordability grant. The government, um, has entered into these affordability grant agreements until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And the hope is that they will have a cost control framework set up uh, for the province of Alberta, um, at that time, so that will roll out in the spring of twenty twenty-five. Currently, they're working on that cost control framework, and that's what bullet point number one uh, relates to, that ELCC advisory committee, that advisory committee is working on collecting data for the cost control framework. And also, they've just implemented a parent engagement piece, so they are, um, trying to engage parents across the province to get feedback on the cost control framework. So I don't see any changes to the affordability grant, um, and the hope from the government is that the next step will be this framework for Alberta.
Thank you for that, and I had one other question, uh, at at currently on the ELCC advisory committee. Would there, are there, uh, representation from not-for-profits, uh, 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 for-profit and other types of childcare? Um, is is there a spectrum of different type of, uh, just different type of childcare at the, at that table currently?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Waxer, my understanding is yes, although I do not know who is on the committee. Um, but the, the government has said that it's all different types of programs, so nonprofit, for-profit, uh, larger scale programs, and then smaller scale programs, and it's supposed to be all across the province.
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, through you to, uh, manager, Miss Wilson, uh, Ms. Daniels, pardon me, um, thank you very much for, uh, the report, and I just wanted to ask a question that Director Reed indicated that we are advocating with other municipal partners to do the same, are they gonna be writing a similar letter to have a a representative from um, municipalities on the, uh, advisory committee?
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson through to Counselor Melnick, at this time, I'm not aware of any other municipal childcare programs that are going to do that, uh, although uh, the meeting with, uh, Assistant Deputy Mayor, uh, Brozniak and Librick, there was a representative from Drayton Valley, um, their childcare services manager, or what what would be the equivalent there? And, uh, what would be the equivalent to Director Reed's position, were both at that meeting, um, so they did get the same information that we did about that advisory committee, and that there was currently no municipal representative on that committee, so, but as of, as of now, they haven't told me they were writing a letter, no.
Thank you for that.
If there's anything further, motions? Uh, Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to, um, Director Reed, just a couple of questions. Two of the advocacy initiatives relate to capital funding. I have looked at the B C model. But to the extent that is a viable model for us. What entities have received funding under that? I don't know whether B C has a practice of municipal daycare, or is that all private funders that get that funding? And I ask because if if we are going to suggest in two cases that governments or provincial and federal look at additional capital funding. Are we suggesting any particular model and how would that apply in our somewhat unique circumstances here?
Uh, thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson through the worship, so, uh, municipalities are eligible, uh, as far as we know in B C. And I couldn't tell you, of course, perhaps Ms. Daniel can, but we don't know what the ratio of, you know, for-profit, not-for-profit, municipal, uh, in B C. What we do know is that the funding amount is dramatically larger than the capital funding amount available in Alberta. And that's what we're referencing, use a model like that where you eliminate, nearly eliminate the capital burden. And that's how you can create spaces. Um, the current Alberta program for space creation is, um, uh, if my memory serves, six thousand dollars a space that we create. So if we were to create twenty spaces, that's hundred and twenty thousand. Hundred and twenty thousand dollars doesn't really get us much building in any community, let alone Jasper. Uh, so in B C, it's it's closer to a hundred percent in some cases, uh, of the actual build cost. Lisa, or Ms. Daniel, do you have anything to add there?
I'd just say, yes, municipalities are eligible for that. Um, childcare space creation or childcare B C New Spaces Fund.
Thank you for that, I have two additional, um, short questions. Has the government of Alberta indicated timing for the appointment of representatives to the ELCC advisory committee?
Um, I can certainly start, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through your worship, that committee's already met, it's already struck. And it, as far as we know, does not contain any municipal representatives of what we know to be municipally operated childcare centers. Again, Ms. Daniels, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, that's correct.
Thank you for that, and then the last observation as part of our advocacy strategy. Perhaps it would be useful for us to at least let our own residents know of the online survey that's available now, encourage. It may not be related precisely to this, but it's it's a survey that the province has put out and closes on February eleventh, related to early learning childcare. We should let as many people as we can know about that opportunity to engage with the province.
Well, I was gonna take approach, uh, like Counselor Hall earlier and try to build a motion by, uh, general consensus here. Um, so, taken from what the mayor just had said, I was going to, uh, massage a motion uh, that would state that committee receive this report for information and have it returned back to council or committee. After February eleventh, the next meeting in February. Which would be we don't have a deadline here right now, do we? That'd be committee on, uh, February thirteenth. I can, I'm gonna reword that better, but does that sound like something that we can do?
Uh, sorry, Counselor Keller?
Thank you Deputy, uh, Mayor Wilson, through you to Counselor DeMola. Can you explain why we hold this?
Well, just, uh, basically for what the mayor just addressed to to get more feedback from the committee, I don't know if that's necessary, but, um.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, maybe there's just a slight misunderstanding, I think his worship was referencing a government developed or a survey that's out on childcare, not a municipal survey, so municipality, uh, won't won't be in control, you know, won't be the first party getting those results if we ever get them, uh, I guess for the benefit of the government of Alberta, and so it doesn't have any
the next day, kind of.
If ever. There have been provincial government surveys that have not provided well-termed reports to the public, so, uh, yeah, I don't think that survey is intended to inform uh, municipalities, I think it's intended to support the government's work. Uh, we can certainly establish our own opinion about what the government should be doing, and that's what the recommendation is here. Uh, thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, just to further Mayor Ireland's point. Uh, if any resident who may be listening right now is interested in that provincial survey, if you go to Alberta dot C A and put early learning and childcare in the search bar right at the top, the first thing you'll get is the early learning and childcare engagement link. So it is fairly straightforward to find on look on the preferences, uh, website.
Counselor DeMola, I was just gonna, does anybody want to, uh, make any official revisions or? Okay. So, uh, having said that, uh, I move the committee recommend council approve the early learning and childcare bilateral agreement advocacy approach as presented.
Thank you for that, uh, Counselors, can I call the question? Okay, please.
I'd just like to speak to the motion, um, which I support. It's disappointing it's taking this long, um, a quick Google search shows that this money was committed uh, by the federal government in twenty seventeen, so many of these families, their kids are are gonna be out of school, out of daycare age, like I, uh, I I absolutely support this, um. I'm just disappointed it's taking this long.
All right, any anything further? Call the question, all in favor? You're not opposed, motion carries. Uh, moving on to item seven point five, affordable housing advocacy. Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, we have, uh, our municipal housing coordinator on, uh, Ma'am Belche, she's here, she's gonna present this report and the next, uh, I have been conversing with her electronically and noted that it's been a long council meeting, and so she's tightened up the presentation, uh, in recognition that all customers have likely read the report and know most of the information, so I'll turn it over to Leah.
Thank you, C A O Given, and good afternoon Deputy Mayor and Council. Um, as noted in the R F D before you, the government of Alberta releases two important data sets related to housing affordability in the province annually. The Apartment Vacancy and Rental Cost Survey, or A V S, provides the provincial government, housing industry, municipalities, and other entities data on private market vacancy and rental rates in rural Alberta. Of note, in the recently released twenty twenty-three A V S and new this year is the government of Alberta's decision to exclude both Banff and Jasper from the calculations of average provincial rental costs and vacancy rates. The second data set calculated and released annually is the Core Needs Income Threshold Amounts, or C N I T. These are the maximum income amounts an individual can earn in a specific community and still qualify for local Government of Alberta Associated Affordable Housing. Calculations result in wide-ranging maximum allowable income amounts across Alberta as illustrated in table one point one of the R F D. Current C N I T amounts for one-bedroom apartment in Jasper and Banff are forty-two thousand and sixty-five thousand dollars respectively. This means that a resident of Banff can earn up to twenty-three thousand more dollars annually than a resident of Jasper and still qualify for affordable housing. Locally, C N I T amounts affects residents' ability to qualify for affordable housing at M P L Place and Evergreens facilities, as well as any future developments funded by or associated with Government of Alberta Affordable Housing Grants, Initiatives, and Programs. As stated in the R F D, the government of Alberta itself makes note of just how different Jasper and Banff are from the rest of the province and how similar they are to each other with a statement in the twenty twenty-three A V S and by its decision to exclude the data from the two communities in the provincial averages. Considering the recognition by the government of Alberta itself that the communities of Jasper and Banff are similarly unique from other rural Alberta communities, an opportunity exists for council to advocate on behalf of Jasper residents to the Ministry of Alberta's Seniors, Community and Social Services that the Government of Alberta Core Needs Income Thresholds used to determine eligibility for affordable housing in Jasper be increased to match those of Banff for twenty twenty-four and going forward. Thank you, and I invite any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Belche, um, Counselors, uh, comments, questions? Uh, Counselor Hall?
Thank you very much Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, I don't really have any questions, I absolutely support this recommendation, I just wanted to point out uh, paragraph four, background. We are, the ministry decides that both Jasper and Banff are unique, which might just be another avenue or advocacy for resort municipal status, that's all I wanted to say.
Uh, Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, just to join on that, yes, it's interesting that after years of requesting status, now designation tourism-based communities. Province, in fact, is prepared to designate Jasper and Banff as having special stats. Pretty interesting, my question, uh, for Ms. Belche, um, is Canmore, um, on the, on the list for C N I T, I'm just interested in what?
Thank you. Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson for your worship, uh, all communities in Alberta are, Canmore is, um, I would have to look it up. Uh, it is on that link. Theirs is higher than Banff. Um, off the top of my head when I was looking at them.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, Ms. Belche was, uh, busy responding to the question, I was able to Google. Uh, so I was able to bring up the document, and so the thresholds for Canmore, so uh, table one point one in the document is the C N I T for a one-bedroom, so we'll keep the same number, so that number for Canmore uh, is seventy thousand. So a resident in Canmore can earn seventy thousand dollars and qualify for affordable housing, um, where a resident in Banff can only earn sixty-five thousand, and a resident in Jasper can only earn forty-two thousand, so again, um, you know, there, and and as shown in the table, Banff isn't the highest in the province, um, but what we're trying to do is build some equivalence and say, well, Jasper and Banff are so similar over here, then they should at least be also treated similarly over here. Um, and so, uh, so we haven't picked the highest number, we said Government of Alberta, you're making this, you know, these equal here, we should be treated the same on the other side of the ledger as well.
Counselor DeMola? Well, I was just wondering if the mayor was going there because of the, uh, the living wage. And, uh, you know, I I think that when you factor that kind of information in there, there's yeah, I I I kind of figured that can, it's gonna be a bit higher. But at the same time, we haven't seen what the, uh, the living wage in Banff is either, cause they haven't participated in that, but, uh, ours is, uh, quite a bit higher than other areas, so that's, that's another thing that I'm not sure of the the court needs, I haven't looked at the, uh, the C N I T. I'm not sure of the, the court needs, I haven't looked at the, uh, the C N I T. Um, information where that's all gleaned from, but definitely something to consider.
Councilor Keller, me?
I also, I agree with supporting this, and I know for Evergreen, a lot of our seniors have a hard time. They basically make, barely make it, some of them, like, and once they go over like that. Five thousand or five hundred or forty-two thousand, like, they're out, and it's so unfair. I'm happy to make the motion.
Please do, thank you.
The committee recommend council authorize the mayor to write a letter to the Minister of Alberta's Seniors, Community and Social Services, requesting that the government of Alberta. Affordable income thresholds for Jasper be increased to match those of them beginning in twenty twenty-four.
I'll call the question all in favor. There are none opposed, which carries. Sorry, Ralph. You, okay. Um, thank you for that, to Miss Belche, and then hand it back over to you for the next, uh. Agenda item seven point six is Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation, uh, shareholder policy.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Uh, before you is an R F D related to the newly formed M C C, the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation. And procedural shareholder policy. On August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, council held a public hearing to vote on the establishment of the Jasper Municipal Housing Corporation. As a municipally-controlled corporation. Following vote in favor of establishing the M C C, administration worked with Brownlee L P P. On fulfilling requirements under the Municipal Government Act and Business Corporations Act. And the J M H C was registered with corporate registries on October twentieth, twenty twenty-three. The corporation's organizational structure includes a shareholder and a board of directors. The municipality is the sole shareholder represented by council, and the board of directors will consist of seven individuals appointed by council. Within this organizational structure, the rights and abilities and roles and responsibilities of municipal council. Shareholders of the corporation and the board of directors differ. As the municipality moves forward with starting up the J M H C. There will be times where council will have to act in its role as the sole shareholder of the corporation. Currently, there is no process to determine who's entitled to represent the municipality as shareholder. At shareholder meetings or how council and the public can be assured that the actions of the municipality as a shareholder. Are consistent with the wishes of council. To provide guidance, we present the attached draft policy. It has been reviewed by Brownlee L P P to ensure it meets requirements under all relevant acts. And we invite, uh, feedback and direction from committee at this time, thank you.
Thank you for that, uh, questions, comments from councillors?
Uh, C A O, Deputy Mayor Wilson, all councils, uh, considering, uh, questions, um. The essential issue here is that council as a body is, uh, you know. Seven individuals, and I think how council makes decisions is pretty well understood, it's a meeting like this, and there's a vote. How council then tells somebody to take that forward, and who gets to act in taking it forward in the role of shareholder is a little bit different. Um, and so, uh, the policy is intended to provide a very, you know, I think, simple and transparent. Uh, process for how will council decide what it wants to do as a shareholder? Um, it would happen at a council meeting in public, and that resolutions of council. Uh, would direct how the municipality would use its shares. Uh, and the policy specifies who gets to, um, sign for that, if I can use that, that term. Uh, and that would be either the, it would be two members of council, always the mayor. Um, and the deputy mayor, or the mayor and one councillor would be required to sign a resolution saying, this is the. Resolution of the shareholder, um, in my past experience, I've, I've been in a position. Where a council was a shareholder of an M C C, um, and it was a bit challenging to demonstrate. To the public or to councillor, I was, was always a concern to me, um, how I can demonstrate that what I did. As the shareholder on behalf of the, the municipality's shareholder, how it corresponded with council direction. And so this policy, I think, you know, is quite straightforward, there should be discussion, debate. Uh, at the council table, council should pass the resolution, and once council has passed the resolution, then the mayor. And the deputy mayor for the mayor and the councillor are authorized to provide that as shareholder direction to the corporation.
Thank you for that. Comments, question, motions?
Councilor Demoda? I was, uh, I had a question, and it's, it's not directly related to this, but I just, I wanted to inquire. Um, just for some support here on, um, I believe the deadline's closed for applications for the board of directors now. And have we had, all three of you, councillor Wilson, to either Mister Given or Miss Belche? Uh, did we have a, a healthy, uh, subscription or application?
Miss Belche, are, are we over seven?
Thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through to councillor Demoda. Uh, application period has closed, and I am thrilled to announce that we had fifteen applicants. So we're just sorting through all of those currently, and, uh, will be presenting to council, um. On the status of those applications.
Thank you very much. Uh, councillor Melnick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, um, in, in order to also have additional discussion, I would vote in favor. Um, and recommend that committee recommend council approve the Jasper and Municipal Housing Corporation shareholder policy as presented.
Good that, councillor Melnick, uh, councillors, let's speak to the motion. Uh, no, I'll call the question all in favor. There are none opposed, motion carries. Thank you for that, Miss Belche. Okay, um, moving on to, uh, councillor Demoda's item seven point seven crosswalks.
Yeah, it was just brought to my attention recently, and it had been mentioned before that, um. The elementary school has, uh, patrols. Near, uh, the crosswalks or at the crosswalks that are, are near the elementary school, high school students aren't required, I believe. Not having, but there are still are children crossing the street in a couple of areas across, uh, Bonham, and, uh. Particularly the one that's right in front of the Southview co-ops, and because of, like, cars parked on one side, um. People have noticed that there have been some close calls, and, uh, I'm just wondering within our, um. Capital planning, if we can, uh, consider maybe working with, uh, with the school. Or, uh, with the school board, sorry, and or, uh, you know, our operations department. Uh, going to the maybe traffic advisory committee to, uh, consider putting, uh, flashing lights there at least. Um, so that, that children will be, cause some of them actually don't use the crosswalk, I've been told too, so. They'll be directed to, I think, more inclined to, to use that, I'm not an expert in this area, but, um, just suggestions that came to me. Um, and I said I would forward to, to council or through council to administration. For consideration, I just am looking for some direction and, uh, maybe provide some, so. Any, uh, any thoughts from fellow councillors?
Councillor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, I too get feedback from residents about. Safety and crosswalks, and I, and I know I asked this in the beginning of the meeting about our transportation master plan, well, and. Am I correct, C A O Given, that it won't cover crosswalks, or will this, will this cover crosswalks?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, so the transportation master plan would be concerned with the physical infrastructure, and so if it was a matter of ballloads. Flashing signs or other items, uh, that absolutely would be the type of thing that would be considered in the trans- transportation master plan. If you look at the existing document, it's up on the Mr. House's website, it actually specifically speaks to the number of, of areas where improvements needed to be made, uh, and some have been. Um, so a item, a mo- and a poach may be. A motion to refer the matter of pedestrian safety at the crosswalk, uh. Uh, south of the, sorry, adjacent to the Southview co-ops. To the transportation master plan for consideration, uh, that way at least it would be documented, it would, you know, when. We start up with a consultant, we'd say, okay, we have a handful of issues previously identified, including this one. That way we could, we could be sure that it wouldn't be, wouldn't be missed.
Thank you for that, and I wonder too, with this master plan, would there be, uh, resident engagement, and maybe this could be. No broadcast that if you have issues, cause I do hear from lots, lots of residents about areas around town that they think they need crosswalks.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson, so, uh, a, a key component or a key part of the process of the transportation master plan review would be public engagement to, to, you know. There'd be the list of identified issues, uh, that come to the, through council, uh, maybe ones that administrations identified, but that would also be a, a component. Would be to, you know, work with the community to identify and, and ensure that there's an opportunity to hear from them about concerns that they may have, and then to. Wrap all those things up, um, and provide technical recommendations on how to address.
Councillor Demoda, you, uh, sculpting a motion? I think that was a yes.
Right, I'm gonna enhance that recommendation, um. I would like to move the committee refer the matter of the pedestrian safety. The committee refer the matter of pedestrian safety at the crosswalks on Bonham. Uh, in adjacent to the sports fields and, um. Southview co-ops. Just because, uh, there were, I, I wanted to bring up the other one too, that's, uh. That's on the, the corner of Bonham and, and the Lee, uh, crossing that way as well. And if we're talking about overall pedestrian safety, um, one's more school-related, but the other one's more of, uh. Use that, again, there's, there's garbage cans across the street there, um. And I don't wanna be self-serving in any way, but a lot of people walk through dogs on that, because usually it's the first to get cleaned in the winter time. And people use that, uh, garbage can to prop the street, they don't necessarily use the crosswalk there. And there's, because it's slippery and things, like, there's just a lot of weird stuff happening with people and dogs, and. So, uh, if you're gonna review one, might as well look at that stretch, cause it's not really, uh, well, um. Marked, and when there's snow on the ground, you can't see the stripes on that crosswalk, and there's no signs indicating that there's a crosswalk there, so. So that's, that's it. Do you need me to repeat that a little? Yeah, okay, that, uh, committee refer the matter of pedestrian safety at the crosswalks on Bonham. Near, on Bonham Street, near, or sorry. Sorry, yeah, but, okay, that committee refer the matter of pedestrian safety at the crosswalks. On Bonham, in adjacent to the playing fields and Southview co-ops. To the transportation, uh, oh no, to the traffic advisory committee.
Councillors, you understand the, the motion? Call the question all in favor. There are none opposed, which carries. Uh, moving on to item seven point eight. I have it down as requests from the province for an update, and Mayor, I think, Wilson.
Thank you, uh, I think this can be brief, um. Sometime last month, Minister of Municipal Affairs, uh, Rick McIver sent a letter to all municipalities. Requesting that they provide information on. All agreements they have with the federal government by the end of January. Um, for Jasper, that would be extensive, we'll begin with our agreement for the establishment of local government. Um, payment of land rent, um, conceivably, it could include every lease or license of occupation. Or land use agreement that we have in this community, um, it could, it could include. Or Jasper partnership agreements, um, the community plan. The relationship agreement that we just signed last week, it is so extensive here, and. Um, I, I raise it only because the timeline is coming up, and I, I would, uh, just request an update from Mister. Given whether, uh, we will comply in time, and whether he might share that list, and I would encourage. Mister Given to pad that list as much as you can, let, let the provincial government know that we are. Deeply embedded and invested with the federal government, and that relationship. Means a substantial amount in this community, which might not be the case in other communities, most other communities in the province.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh, for Mayor Ireland and, and council in terms of updates, so yes, administration, uh, received this request from the province, all C A Os. The province did, uh, obviously, as, as we should have identified, significantly different for Jasper. Uh, to comply with that provincial request than I think the province was imagining it would be. Uh, obviously, we share that concern with another municipality in Banff, and so, uh, yesterday, uh, the C A O of Banff and I. Met with the representative provincial staff, just to outline our concerns about the amount of work, administrative work that it would take to actually gather all those. Um, cause conceivably, it could also go to use permits and, you know, development permitting in Jasper's case. Signatures on third-party use of bylaws, like, we just, and the, um, provincial staff. Uh, really appreciated us, appreciated us sharing our unique context with them, uh, they clarified the scope and came back and. And suggested that, um, it would be okay if Jasper and Banff provided. The grant type of agreements in which involve funding from the provincial government, sorry, from the federal government to the municipality. Like, and we suspected that that was the scope that they were really, there's a, there's a provincial federal issue that, that I think is at play here. Um, and we suspected that what they really wanted to know was how much money are the feds providing directly to the municipality? Um, once we helped them understand that what they were asking for was not that, and for us, it meant a much larger burden. They were happy to clarify their scope to say, yes, we mean for Jasper and Banff, please only submit grant type agreements. Or other types of, uh, they say, could you please provide a very brief, high-level overview of what type of fee for service arrangements you may have? Uh, because in Jasper's case, for example, we have a fee for service to do ground maintenance on federal properties. Uh, the federal government pays us for emergency response outside of the townsite in terms of fire. Um, and highway, so, you know, there's, uh, and they were satisfied if we just simply described some of that and limited our submission to grant. Grant type agreements, um, so I think Kelly and I were, the, the C A O of Banff, and I were satisfied with that, we're gonna work complying. We certainly can circulate that information to council, but we provide it to the province as well.
Thank you very much, appreciate, um, the update, and you might include that the federal government, at least. Pays the full amount of grants in lieu of taxes, whereas another government does not.
Councillor Demoda? Yeah, I just, I, I wanted to add to that, but I'll, I'll talk to Mister Given on the side, and maybe just for the public. Again, I've kind of aired my, uh, issues with Parks Canada, marketing Jasper, like, they don't specifically say Jasper, but. They're inviting everybody that, and every place that has red chairs and rafting and all that, and. Jasper is one of those places, and they're out advertising for people to come here, and again, we're the hub, and we have to receive people, and. You know, there is that level of service as well, whether we have a service agreement to host the people that they are marketing to. Um, that's another point, I think that even though it's kind of one of those intentives. You can physically go to one of their, on YouTube, and look at one of their commercials, and there's Jasper in there, so. Um, I will, I would recommend using some of that footage and, and commercials saying, you know, look at. You're asking people. You're asking people to come to Jasper here and then, you know, it's just like the usher. I get, I get to watch the movie, so you charge me for, for working in the movie theater. And I think that's a valid. You know, argument. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that brings us to motion action list, item eight on the agenda. Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. This in speedy time. Paying parking correspondence, we're recommending to refer that to February. Childcare advocacy was delivered today. Administration recommends that could be removed. The Hakone in Japan initiatives. That one has previously been delivered. We recommend that could be removed. The Crisis Team Jasper Society recommends that could be moved, obviously would be replaced with additional directions which we see today. And I believe that that's all of the updates to the motion action list, the update to the pay parking and then those three rules. Councillors, questions with the motion action list, motions? Maybe just a motion? Motion, motion to. Receive the ended or accept, accept the motion action list as amended. On paper? They're not opposed? What carries? Hey councillor, upcoming meetings, item nine. Meetings. Counselor Kelly.
On Friday, I have a meeting with TransCanada Yellowhead. I will resume at noon.
Counselor Demona?
Well, I just have a question because several is away for February sixth. I'm not sure exactly when we had a legislative committee or next one scheduled, but I don't think. At least. Most of us won't be here for that. So what was for the sixth, we'll have to change the date. I can't remember what the, the date was that we. Changed that too. So I, that is a public meeting. I just wanted to make sure we're on site.
Councillors, any other upcoming meetings, Mayor Ireland?
Friday afternoon. Mr. Given and I are meeting scheduled with Representative Close at Co and. I recently heard from that representative inviting. Counsel to dinner that evening. So if there are councillors who would be interested in attending. A dinner with an Atco representative on Friday night. Please let me know and I will ask that information. I don't have. Dime or venue right now, so it's an invitation that I was extending. Councillors, I have done that. This Friday. And on Monday, Mr. Given and I have. An online meeting with our counterparts in Banff, Canmore. And I've known however, and so like regarding tourism based communities and. Strategizing on their next steps with the provincial government.
Could you clarify is that Atco electric, gas or Atco in general? Sorry guys, you know, given that Deputy Mayor Wilson, maybe I can say this worship sometime. Going through a overloaded inbox, I believe it's with Atco Electric. I think that there's a new regional representative manager. And as they assume the post, they want to come and introduce themselves to Jasper. So I believe something after second. Thank you for that. Counselor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I know this is past, but on this past Thursday, I attended the Community Futures West Yellowhead Board Meeting. With councillor Melnick and Hinton and it was very interesting and exciting that. A lot more businesses were be able to, were able to pay off that SIBA government loan way more than they anticipated by the deadlines. So that was really good news. They seemed quite pleased. I'm sure councillor Melnick will attest to that as well. This coming Monday, I have Yellowhead Regional Library Training. I've taken a position as a trustee and I think.
Okay, thank you for that, councillors. Upcoming events is item ten. We have Jasper in January currently occurring. It's January twelfth through twenty eighth. Lots of events happening now regarding. Netma is January twenty fourth, harvest food and drink. The regular council meeting, there were Tuesday, February sixth, is canceled. Coldest night of the year is February twenty fourth from four to seven, meeting at the Jasper Activity Centre. Strategic priorities review is February twenty ninth to March first at Pyramid Lake Lodge. That brings us to item ten point one is an in camera, intergovernmental. And Mayor Ireland?
If I could just make one comment about Jasper in January. I was invited, I think, yesterday to speak at the street party on Saturday night at about seven thirty. That's to be confirmed. There is no representative from Atco this year. And so. The organizers have invited another member of council to also speak, which seems. A bit odd, but I said we pass on the invitation. So I, I am available and will speak, but if there's another council. Once you speak at the street party on Saturday night, you can go to the welcome.
Right, one of us could go up and sing a song.
So as Mayor Ireland writes the words.
I think it's a motion to go into camera. Counselor Kelly on paper. The motion carries and just for the public, we don't plan to come out to buy in camera with any decision. So I, as you do. At this point and off we go in camera.